I'm so exhausted. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Stevens Point Public School District Board meeting for Monday, March 9th, 2015. Roll call.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Earler?
Here.
Ms. Saxton?
Here.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Here.
Mr. Presley?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Sherrick?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
Verification of quorum.
Thank you. We need to approve the agenda. Does anybody have any changes? Any need a motion, please?
Move to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll second.
Ms. Saxton?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have students from Jefferson Elementary School coming to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have students that would like to recognize from Jefferson, right? Jefferson Ebel. I know that these three young men are good. So, Sadie LeSien, right? Sadie? Kelly Gruber? No? Okay. Talissa? There you go. And Zoe. Give it up for our young lady. (Applause). Introduce your parents.
My mom's Lisa.
Welcome, Lisa.
My mom's Carrie.
Carrie?
My mom's Trisha, but she's out in the hallway.
Trisha? Welcome. And who's going to introduce your teacher, your sponsor?
This is Miss Noah. I have wonderful family.
Welcome. Okay, so if you turn your certificates around, then we have a picture right there. Great. The board members would like to meet you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great job, all of you coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for coming down such beautiful day.
Thanks for coming down.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You guys did an awesome job.
So, this month, we'd like to recognize the Stevens Point Child Safety Center. I know that Kathy Gershak is here, and I know that Joanne is joining. Why don't you both line up?
Yep.
We want to ask you if your parents are here, so.
(Laughter). The district and the board would like to recognize the Stevens Point Child Safety Center for their long relationship with the district, which spans well over two decades. Over many years, the Child Safety Center has worked very closely with SPAS' driver ed department, and at one time, holding presentations for up to five classes each quarter. The Child Safety Center staff members speak to students about seatbelt and airbag safety, the proper progression for children's safety in booster seats, crash bags, bits and facts on airbags, and numerous other topics related to safe driving. The presentations include videos and a small safety quiz for students. The Child Safety Center staff like to bring small prizes for students to win as they answer questions, as well as handouts and brochures on related topics. In October of 2010, the Child Safety Center partnered with the district and several other organizations to hold a one-day event at SPAS called "Texting Your Life Away." During the event, students drove golf carts through a course in the SPAS parking lot and were sent text messages that they had to respond to. Students were scored as they drove the course with no texts, and then again, while tech receiving and responding to messages. This proved the point to students just how dangerous texting and driving actually is. We want to thank the Stevens Point Child Safety Center for partnering with us and graciously volunteering their time and expertise to our driver ed programs and the students and staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In recognition of the significant and profound contributions to the district for advancing the education of all its students and for helping us to fulfill our mission to prepare each student to be successful, with deep heartfelt thanks and gratitude. Thank you so much.
Charlie, do you want to say anything?
No, thank you very much. This is great. We will be doing another texting and driving campaign either probably in April this year, since it's been five years, so another group of kids to go through it.
Wonderful. So, dancing.
Hi. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Can I do the texting and driving?
Oh, sure.
Thank you for doing this. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks again. Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Good seeing you. Thanks.
Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Next, we have the boys, SPAS Boys Hockey Team. So, you guys want to come on in? Thought maybe the goalie would wear his outfit. All right. So, we have many, many boys hockey team members that we want to recognize, but we had six that were able to make it to them. And the reason that we're recognizing them is because they raised $5,000 during their annual Pink the Rink event. The hockey team presented St. Michael's Foundation with the check for $5,000 on February 11th to help support local cancer patients. The money donated will go to the Project Embrace Fund, which provides squeeze blankets to oncology patients while they are undergoing chemotherapy or radiation, and the Angel Project, which provides prevention, detection, and screening services for breast cancer to qualifying patients in our community. We want to thank you for making a positive impact on our community, demonstrating kindness and compassion for others, and making the district proud of each and every one of you every single day. So, thank you. So, let's give it up. (Applause). I may not get the pronunciation of your last name correctly, but I apologize. So, you correct me, okay? Don't feel bad if you do. Is it Devon? He's not here. Oh, good. You can help him, please.
Nope.
Eli? Okay.
Nope. Eli? Nope.
He has it all at the end, though.
Nope. Phil Tributowski. Right there, Phil.
I think so.
Greg?
Nope.
It's a big team.
Kyle?
Nope.
That's a very big team. Mark?
I don't understand.
Alec?
Nope.
Nope.
Wow. You're not the end of it.
Are you sure they're hockey players?
Jared Jones.
I know.
Colin?
Nope.
Noah? Is it?
Seacash.
Seacash.
Noah Seacash.
I know.
Nope.
We got their show for graduation.
(Laughter).
It'd probably be here if we had ice on the floor.
Nope. That's me.
Jacob? Jacob, your friends?
Your friends.
Friend? Thank you.
Yep.
Your friend?
Yeah, he's here as well.
That's it. We got them all. All right. Let's give it up one more time. (Applause). Just one little question. Just tell us how it felt to be able to do what you do, raising that kind of money for a good.
It was the coolest experience. We sold a lot of t-shirts with our students and to a lot of the community that raised most of the money for it. I got to give a lot of the credit to the Sickelvan family. They're not here tonight as their kids try and help for another hockey team, but they helped organize most of it, and they did a lot of the organization and raised a lot of the money for us. But it was amazing to, I was very surprised I would raise $5,000, and when we got to deliver that check to the St. Michael's Foundation, it was just awesome.
Wonderful. And you want to recognize your coaches, too?
Our coach, Dan Francis. Assistant coaches, Brandon Bussi, Kyle Heck, and Greg Haney, and then our team manager, Brock Mosky.
Wonderful. Okay. If anyone wants to hold the certificates up. You're the most important. Wonderful. Okay. The board members would like to meet you.
Any parents here?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Thank you. Are there parents?
My mom, Michelle, is in the back there.
Hi, Michelle.
My mom, Kelly.
Kelly? Kelly, you want to wave? There you go.
My mom and dad, Mark and Lisa.
Mark and Lisa, thank you for coming.
My mom, Karen.
Karen?
My parents.
Karen, Sarah? Okay. Thank you very much for your support as well. We appreciate it. All right, guys.
Great job. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you. It is just the coolest thing you guys did. Thank you so much. Thank you. It was really cool. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah. You guys are awesome. Really proud of you. That's it. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming tonight. I know you better be staying. Thanks so much, you guys. You're awesome. Thanks.
This month, we're recognizing a staff member from Bannock. That is, we're having a student recognize a staff member from Bannock, which we've done every month now. So, if Autumn, Erin's, and Chris Kunkel could please come on. Autumn, we're going to have you stand right here in between Mrs. Kunkel and myself. There you go. So, every month, we ask a principal to ask a student to identify a staff member. Could be anybody in the school who has made a positive difference in his or her life. And this champion, our principal at Bannock, selected Autumn, and Autumn selected Mrs. Kunkel. And I think she has something to read. All right?
Mrs. Kunkel, there are many good teachers out there, but Mrs. Kunkel is the best teacher I've ever had. Mrs. Kunkel is so sweet. She loves to joke around with you once in a while, and she treats every student the same. Although I said she loves to joke around, when it's time to get to work, we get to work. Mrs. Kunkel is a second-grade teacher. Alyssa and I both had her. I feel like thinking of Mrs. Kunkel, Alyssa and I are really good friends. Mrs. Kunkel is a great teacher because whenever I need help spelling a word or help, she would be there for me. She is also a great person to talk to on your free time because she listens and helps you through life. My favorite part about Mrs. Kunkel is that she taught me to debate and to open up some of the possibilities. Yet, I am very excited to go into PJ's. I'll be heartbroken when I have to leave because I will probably not be able to see her as much. I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Kunkel because you did so much for me.
So, before I have you say anything, this certificate was signed by Autumn and myself, so I'm going to have Autumn read this to her. Okay? You can start right there.
This certificate is awarded to Chris Kunkel, teacher at Bannock Elementary School. This student staff recognition is presented to you for the positive and lasting impact you have made on me and my fellow students. You are a family of teachers and learners. You have taught me and many of the essentials of how to learn values, how to live a good, how to live a good life, and how I may pay for it. A heartfelt thanks and gratitude.
Me.
Chris, you want to say anything?
I'll miss Autumn also. I hate to see this class go on. Every class is hard to see them go to PJ's now that my brother isn't there anymore, because then I can't hear as much, but they all do well, so I appreciate it very much.
All right. So, you want to turn your certificate down this around, and I'm assuming you'll give it to her. Yeah. Are you fancy? Want to introduce her?
My mom is Beth.
Her name is?
Christy.
Christy.
And my dad, Eric.
Eric. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
And my brothers.
Okay. Great. Big shoes to fill there, guys. All right. So, the board of that.
Job. Thank you for coming. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for doing that. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks, Autumn. That was wonderful.
Good job. It's great. Thanks for.
Thanks.
Honoring you. That was really nice.
Thank you.
We loved that. We're, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for doing that. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Autumn. That was wonderful.
Good job. It's great. Thanks for.
Thanks.
Honoring you. That was really nice.
Thank you.
We loved that.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Some donations.
We also want to recognize folks and organizations who contributed to the district. Two anonymous donations of $250 and $1,000 have been made to the Stevens Point Area Public School District, Ben Franklin Junior High School Cheer and Stunt Team. The donation has been made specifically for the Elite International Cheer and Dance Championship in Chicago. The district recognizes today's furniture in Stevens Point for the generous and heartfelt donation of three twin-size box springs, mattresses, and bed frames to three young children in a less fortunate family in the community who are doing and going without. We also recognize Ken Lualin from Ken's Busy Bee for donating his time and skills to deliver the beds and assemble them in the family's home. We also recognize those district staff, parents, and community members who helped fund the Terry Witt Fund at MacDill, which was used to purchase the bedding for the children. This kindness of heart was the initiative of Brenda Jones, MacDill elementary teacher, who recognized a human need and took personal action when she became aware that one of our families was in great need. Donations are more than monetary. They begin with an awareness that a need exists, move to develop a plan to fill that need, act on the plan, and then deliver the donations. Thank you, Brenda, today's furniture, Ken Lualin, and those who contribute to the Terry Witt Fund at MacDill for filling this family's need. It is the spirit of this community come alive. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, move on to public comments. We have seven speakers tonight, beginning with Albert.
President, if I could give my time to you.
Thank you. Bob Larson is next.
Oh, I don't know what I'm doing. Hang on, Mr. Larson. I'm sorry.
Bob Larson, 3283 Lindbergh Avenue, Stevens Point. I want to make a few remarks on the Consolidated Task Force and also on the Point of Discovery Charter School. The information, some of the information I'm going to give you tonight is your own information, the 2011-2012 facility study, and September 19, 2014, Third Friday Student Enrollment. A little history. The main reason for the Consolidated Task Force to look at realignment of the Stevens Point District was to take pressure off our elementary schools in the Plover area. That's the growth area of the district, the southern area, and the schools were getting near capacity. The realignment that the task force came up was take the sixth grade out of the elementary schools and put them into the junior highs. Move the ninth grade out of the junior highs and put into SPAS. One question came up. Why not open Jackson School again? It's the largest elementary school in our district, 52,000-plus square feet. The administration said opening of Jackson School is not a good option. Briefly mentioned was transportation and cost. Then, I'm asking the board and administration, why is it okay to open Jackson School at a cost of $1.1 million or $32,000 per student? Also, what is the cost of transportation for 34 students to Jackson? If you open up Jackson Schools as an elementary school, you solve the elementary problem in the Plover area and save the taxpayers $36 million on Option 1 referendum or $98 million on Option 2 referendum. If you open up Jackson School for 34 students, you cost the taxpayers $1.1 million and then want the taxpayers to authorize a $36 or $98 million referendum for grade realignment. Also, keep in mind, Portage County is putting together a new jail and county facility that would require $85 million from the county taxpayers. The board should look at policy number 610. Fiscal management goal. It basically says, spend the tax dollars wisely. The Technology Center does not have to go into Jackson School. Couple of ideas. The city wanted Emerson property, and if the deal with the UW University has not gone through yet between the city to pick up Midstate, that might be an option. Throw in Emerson property that they want and a little cash. Number two, the owner of the Cops Building on Shirt Street said they would sell the building for $1 million. That's over a million and a half drop in price. Put the Technology Center in that building. It's centrally located. If you need to put the Point of Discovery School in a building, consider these options. Put the Point of Discovery in Jefferson School. At 82% capacity, the number of students would be 348 students. The Friday, September 2014 count, the number of students in Jackson School is 268. That's 64% capacity of that building. Put the Point of Discovery School in Ben Franklin. At 74% capacity, the number of students would be 1,209. Third Friday, September 2014, the number of students at Ben Franklin School is 857. That's 53% capacity.
Bob, you're at three minutes, but I'm going to let you finish up if you can wrap it up.
I can wrap it up. PDA Jacobs, 80% capacity is 1,098, and September, the students were 732. Again, 53% capacity. How can you justify opening the Jackson School for 34 students when you cannot open it for 300 to 400 students? The administration needs to explain how Jackson is not a good idea as a full-time elementary school, yet it's okay for 34 students. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam is next. It's okay. Just tell me.
Thank you. Sam Levin, 1021st Street, Stevens Point. Got a couple of comments. First of all, I believe it was foreplanning to have a meet and greet with the two finalists for the superintendent on the same date and time as a scheduled forum for school board candidates. Three people are going to be elected as board, and they should not have to choose between two very important events. I didn't attend the business services committee meeting. I did want to speak on the bus contracts, but the last I saw on the website, it was canceled. Besides which, there's no agenda there. There hasn't been for several months. We now have a full-time board secretary, and yet, we don't get correct information on the website. It doesn't make sense to me. By the way, item 9G2 in your packet incorrectly states that you had your first board listening session. It was your second. The other thing is, we have these lists in the superintendent's office of school board members. If community member might need their email address or phone number, this one's dated 2013. Good spending on the money. As most of you know, I went down to transportation to see what was going on down there, and I reported some of my concerns at the listening session. I want to just hit on a few more points. I'd like to know what happened to the service coordinated position that has a job description made out and was approved a long time ago. I still want to know about the Skyward compatibility clock that costs thousands of dollars more than the other time clocks available, and why it was purchased in December and still not working, and we had to go out and buy another one for $330 so they can clock in. And then, the policies once again. We need to get the policies straight. If the transportation manager does disciplinary action, why is it being overruled by Bliss? Like I said before, I'm not an ignorant person. I look and I research problems. Is Bliss clueless when it comes to transportation? Are they attempting to micromanage transportation? Information isn't being forthcoming to the elected school board members, or else the information I'm getting is a ruse to discredit my candidacy for the school board, or else people down there, or up here at Bliss are just stupid. Very simple. We need some answers. Once again, I was informed about an email, and I was told I could have it, then when I went to get it, I was told I couldn't have it. But anyway, I was shown the email, and I, people sat there and watched me take pictures of it on my cellphone, my iPad.
You're at three minutes. If you could wrap up, please.
I sure will. But anyway, I was allowed to walk out with it. I gave it back to the listening session. I hope it got back to the current owner. If not, I got another copy and give you so you can make sure they give it to them. But, okay, I'll make it very quick, and I'll close up. I just formally want to present this to the superintendent, and I'll read it to you if you can pass it down to him. This is Dr. Winiger. This letter will serve as my request for an email, any email, between Mr. Donald Keck from Buildings and Grounds and Mr. John Sheffer, transportation manager, on Friday, October 18, 2013, between the hours of 4:00 and 4:45 PM. I'm specifically looking for an email with the subject, "Interaction with Board Members." Would you pass that down? And Brenda, you, that, I know you look quizzically when I mess the email, Dr. Winiger. It states on here, "John, if a board member asks you a question, do not respond until you have spoken to me and been given direction on how to proceed. Have a good weekend." Doesn't sound to me like the information is coming to the board members as it's supposed to. And if that's the fact, whoever is responsible for this should be terminated immediately. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Matthew?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Kowalowski. I have three children currently enrolled in our school district. I believe that education should be a fundamental right, and that accessible and progressive education that is inclusive and cooperative set the right stage for creative and engaged learning environment for our students. Save Our Schools began as a recall effort, yet as we moved forward, we came to learn that Save Our Schools was bigger than a recall. We want to be very clear. Save Our Schools is not attempting to attack any school board member's character. Motivation for our efforts stem from behavior, not character. We are focused on positive leadership behavior consistently being upheld by our board. A recall election of present board members would not take place until after the regular April school board elections. A recall would require a special election that would cost our school district close to $40,000. We support the responsible use of taxpayer dollars and believe this money is better spent on efforts within the school district to help students learn and to help improve the working conditions of our school district employees. The goal of Save Our Schools is to raise community awareness of the issues facing our district. The relatively recent history of unprofessional behavior at school board meetings is a serious issue.
I specifically looking for an email with the subject "interaction with board members." Would you pass that down? And friend of you that, I know you look quizzically when I mess the email, Dr. Winiger, it states on here, "John, if a board member asks you a question, do not respond until you have spoken to me and been given direction on how to proceed. Have a good weekend." Doesn't sound to me like the information is coming to the board members as it's supposed to. And if that's the fact, whoever is responsible for this should be terminated immediately. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Matthew?
My name is Matthew Kowalowski. I have three children currently enrolled in our school district. I believe that education should be a fundamental right, and that accessible and progressive education that is inclusive and cooperative set the right stage for creative and engaging learning environment for our students. Save Our Schools began as a recall effort, yet as we move forward, we came to learn that Save Our Schools was bigger than a recall. We want to be very clear, Save Our Schools is not attempting to attack any school board member's character. Motivation for our efforts stem from behavior, not character. We are focused on positive leadership behavior consistently being upheld by our board. A recall election of present board members would not take place until after the regular April school board elections. A recall would require a special election that would cost our school district close to $40,000. We support the responsible use of taxpayer dollars and believe this money is better spent on efforts within the school district to help students learn and to help improve the working conditions of our school district employees. The goal of Save Our Schools is to raise community awareness of the issues facing our district. The relatively recent history of unprofessional behavior at school board meetings is a serious issue. We have succeeded in our goal of raising awareness of this issue, and we will continue to expect respectful, considerate leadership of our school board, consistently modeling behavior that sets a positive example for our students, whose future is in your hands. In addition to community awareness, Save Our Schools has brought to light the distrust within the school district. Many district employees and community members shared their disapproval with the behavior of some members of our board, but they also expressed fear about signing a recall petition, fear of repercussions within the school district or within their businesses. Fear does not promote student achievement. The public can see evidence of every school board member's behavior at public meetings and school board meetings by attending or watching online. A number of us choose to watch online because of the convenience of this avenue to stay informed and yet meet all of the other family obligations that having children demands. Save Our Schools is voicing the concerns of many community members who want to see our school boards uphold their code of conduct and move the district forward in positive ways to support our students. We believe that our efforts to this point have met with success in several areas. First, we have raised the public's awareness of the behavior concerns facing our school board and our district. Second, we have engaged thousands of people in our community who expect excellent leadership from our elected officials. Finally, I want to say this, and thank you so much for it, we have seen improvement in behavior. At much more recent school board meetings, we want to thank each and every board member here tonight for upholding the code of conduct at the public meetings in January and February. Because of this, we have watched the school board move forward on important issues such as the Consolidated Task Force. This is a welcome change. Effective, respective leadership is what our students, our district, and our community deserve. Effective, respective leadership is what Save Our Schools will continue to emphasize in the community and at our school board meetings. We do not expect everyone to agree all the time. We do not necessarily want every vote to be unanimous. We do expect, though, that the school board members will treat one another and the administration with respect, even when they do not agree. This is effective leadership, and this is what we expect and deserve. This is the example I would like to see when I stream in from home, and want to share with my children examples of what leaders can do, leaders that will shape their future. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Reed, you're next.
Save Our Schools was a joke. They were the ones unprofessional, not the ones they're claiming were unprofessional. I support Totten and Sherrick. And they were a failure. They couldn't get their signatures. Now they're trying to come here with this idea like, oh, they're really successful. Number two, the superintendent search really baffles me. Such a big and important deal, but done so secretly. Now that you've downed to two finalists, I would like to know how the board voted on, who was, and how they were chosen. So that's an open record request, verbal open record request, that'll come as soon as, you can fill that. That shouldn't be that tough. You should have votes here. I want to see how you people voted to get it down to two insiders, you know, not some outsiders, where we may get some new ideas and a new outlook. I thought the whole problem was with the current superintendent, and that's why we're looking for a new superintendent. So here we got two people that work for this guy. So, I mean, this really seems like pathetic. And then number two, Meg Earler, you got the board members' comments taken away because you claimed there was a lack of information if they just put down a title. Well, let's see what you're gonna say here tonight on Angel Faxon's president report. All she does is just list a couple of items, and unlike even the superintendent, he at least puts down in the packet what he's talking about, and so should the president. And you shouldn't, you should be as adamant as you were about taking board comment away about the president's report. Okay. Rules on board members' request for information, well, that's fairly good, except number three, the request should state the rationale and request information to better enable the superintendent to fulfill their request. Look, the superintendent is working for you. You're not working for him. You don't have to tell him why you want information. It makes, it's contrary to, even in public record law, doesn't, you don't have to tell the reason, and neither should you. If you want information, the superintendent gets it for you. Okay, here. This Jackson School, and Bob Larson really brought up some good ideas, and I saw somebody taking notes. Let's hope that you put his thoughts to good use here and don't rush off tonight and just approve this school. You know, this Jackson School, oh, man, it was terrible school when it was, you know, when it was being brought up to be used for, you know, so we didn't need to put an addition on plover writing. Ah, couldn't use it, all the problems you had with it. All of a sudden, no! And the yuppies want to have a little special school here, boy, then everything's okay. And by the way, what, the yuppies can't look at those beautiful murals that you'd want to take down? Does the public know all this beautiful artwork there? They say, oh, that's too elementary or something for the kids. You ought to go look at that public.
Reed, you have three minutes, if you could wrap it up, please.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap her up. And, oh, yeah, you name it as a technical center. Okay, I said your idea, putting it COPS is a good idea, but the naming of it, I think I recall a while back, that Sentry wants it named after them. Uh-uh-uh. You name it, you keep it something neutral. You call it the COPS Technical Center, you call it the Jackson Technical Center, if you're foolish enough to put it there, but you don't call it Sentry. The taxpayers are footing the bill, the majority of the bill, they're gonna be taking care of it, it's their school, and you don't name it after Sentry Insurance. And number two, give it a generic name, yeah, okay. Three minutes for everything now. Wasn't a real dandy one. How's people supposed to cover any topics here? I think it's...
Thank you. Glenn?
Glenn, 1024 Brawley Street, Stevens Point, speaking as an individual. It might help you if you have Agenda 9G1 in front of you, I will be addressing a few key points to it. My request here tonight is to ask the board to vote no, or at least delay the vote for the Professional Development Center, and I'll give you some background. Again, I encourage you to check all my information to see if it is factual and go forward. I wanted to mention, if people do not know, 2005, the decision was made to close Jackson School. At that time, the concern was that the enrollment had dropped down to 7,400. Accordingly, online, at least for the state, it said 7,410 is what we were at that year. We currently are 50 below that number right now. We're lower than when the decision was made to close Jackson. So as far as enrollment issues, we've actually gone further away from the idea of opening Jackson if it had to deal with an enrollment issue. So like I said, we are lower than we were when they closed Jackson because of enrollment. The second thing I want to talk about refers largely to the items number four, misconceptions about the Professional Development Center. First off, you understand all tech training is currently done at school, largely during half-days, which will now be whole-days, at SPAS. And if you ask the staff, and I've asked the staff from all buildings, it works well. And here's why. You are not paying for extra subs when they do it on the institute days. We're gonna have six full days, which gives us the opportunity. Now, we have teachers who travel to three classrooms every day. To set up in the classroom, we have smart boards in some rooms, we have laptops in other, we have projector screens. For River Academy, we've been doing it for the past 11 years, moving from room to room to room. It is not a hardship or a travesty for the TIS workers to be able to move from room to room. And understand, the majority of the staff, in 2013, when we were polled internally by SBA, and then also externally by the district, overwhelming support said, no, we want our training in our buildings. We want our training in our buildings. Now, the understanding is that we wanted it where we were. Now, it doesn't mean people would be, you know, concerned that it would be somewhere else, but the big concern is the task force, the tech task force, coming forward. I spoke to people who were on the committee, and they said, we never brought it forward. I said, was it wasn't discussed? Well, no, we just didn't think it was a good idea. We never brought it forward. We never forwarded it as an idea that should be done. You look at anything that you'll find, it's never been brought forward as something that should be done at all. If you look at the difference between the 2013 proposal and the 2015 proposal, the only difference is, they didn't ask staff this time. Either they don't want to know, or they know, and we don't know good enough, or well enough, I guess that's technically what should be said. The other thing that I looked at is, my concern is, it's working well now, and if you look at the terms, it said, why does the district number three need dedicated staff? This is salesmanship. You get world-class professional development. You get an ideal staging area. It's directly connected to the success and the supports. There's no data here. This is what I call filler. When students turn things in like this, I go, but you're not telling me anything. And that's my concern. As far as the misconceptions, Point of Discovery, I think a lot of people are really gun-shy about talking about Point of Discovery because it is a great program. But this is our first program that we've ever dedicated a school outside of the building that it's in. Every other charter school, ESD, Wisconsin River Academy, has been a school within a school. This is the first time ever we are opening up a building. And so everyone understands, the money for the charter that comes from the state and federal, that's not gonna pay for the building. That's not gonna pay for the teachers. That's not gonna pay for the heat, for the air conditioning, for the maintenance. That's all gonna be extra operating budget. So it asks, if you want real numbers, if you go three to five years out, ask for operating expenses, Jackson School, three to five years out, heating, cooling, and you get some realistic things. The other thing is, we take a look at, it is a concern because we're running under an idea that everything else is fine in the district and everything's fully funded. There is no connection, and I typed in numerous things from the Eric search, from Phi Beta Kappa, a number of research, educational research items. I couldn't find a single study that had anything to do with the quality of your tech center and the quality of your education. It just doesn't exist. It is so far removed from classroom size, the quality of the teacher in the classroom, from socioeconomic background of your students. That's what matters. That is direct, hands-on, that is gonna be the biggest bang for the buck. Not a building that parents can potentially come to. And that's the big concern that I'm concerned about. We talk about the process that took place, because if you gave a parent a true question, do you want the best quality teacher at 20-to-1 ratio, or would you like to be trained on an app at Jackson, once or twice? That's a fair question. Not to say, hey, we're gonna do this with this, we're gonna do this with this. It sounds great, but the actual educational impact is very limited. My concern is, I see $175,000 that's given to the district, very generously by private businesses. But can you ever recall an instance where the businesses, I don't know if it's through the superintendent's coercing, have ever leveraged a board vote saying, you get none of this if you don't support it? I can't believe that's true. That can't be the intent. I remember Mr. Rochel coming up saying, hey, I want to pay for all the safety guards. And we said, no, 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 that can't work out, that can't work out. And we were not about to go by his whims to allow him to do something for the district. Yet we have $175,000 that explicitly, at least if this is correct, that says, you can't use it for anything else. Do we know that's true for every business? Brian Casey came to our school two weeks ago and said, hey, we're gonna have to downsize, we're running out of money. The money that Sentry has generously offered, we're running to the end. We're gonna have to have cheaper laptops, refurbished laptops. We're gonna have to downsize, we're gonna have to make some economies. That money from Microsoft, there's nothing that says that can't be used to help bolster what we have. That's not select funds, we're saying if it's for technology. I'm just saying, it sounds really good, and I understand, everybody wants a winner. But there are places for the Point of Discovery school. There are things that can be done. As I mentioned, Wisconsin River Academy, we worked out of an auditorium. It's not educationally feasible to do that, but there are things that can be done, but they've never been asked. Been walked around the school saying it's a done deal, again, without a vote, without even a suggestion that it's ever not going to happen. And to put 50 students in a very special place at the detriment of 7,300 others, I think we're sending the wrong message. I think you have to separate the charter school from the gold package that we potentially can offer the charter school. There are other places where the exact same thing can be done. Efficiencies do not always mean bad things.
You have six minutes, if you could wrap up, please.
So I ask you, it's too big an investment, there's some real concerns about the process. And moving forward, I think we need more information, but my concern is, everybody's already made up their choice because they really like the school, and it just looks so good on paper. But educationally, you're not getting a lot of bang for your buck for either programs. There's better options. Thank you.
Thanks. Our next speaker is Kurt. I just want to say one thing, though. Per our legal counsel, you're not allowed to give time to someone else. I didn't stop you tonight because I assumed Glenn had prepared something that would take an extra amount of time, but in the future, we are not allowed to do that. Thanks. Kurt, come on up.
Kurt Lepek, 127 Watkins Court. I have three things I want to speak to the board about today. The first one was, is just a concern. I was here at the last meeting that was here at the Bliss Center, and for some reason, the Stevens Point Police Department was called when closed session started. I sent a email to Superintendent Winiger asking why. He said that the district had asked for the police officer to be present. I think the district is an inanimate object, and I'm just curious as what's going on, why, when there's only three people outside in the board and members of the school district here, that we have a police officer here? So if we paid for that, I'd like to know why we paid for that. Second of all, at that last meeting, again, there was an instance where a board member, Mr. Presley, brought up a possible change to an item for contracts. It dealt specifically with the administration. At that time, Dr. Winiger spoke up. I believe that was not the place nor the time for him to speak up, and he should have recused himself like Ms. Totten does. You are voting on administration contract, which he is a part of. I personally don't think that when the janitors' contracts come up, or the teachers' contracts come up, that anybody's gonna be sitting at the table and gonna be able to put in their two cents at that time. So I think that was a mistake by allowing him to speak at that time on a board discussion because he's technically the administration. The last thing that I want to speak about is the vote not to do an investigation. I don't know how to say this, but it seems ludicrous that no investigation was done. And part of the reason I say that is because potentially, a person or persons on the board may have done something that they shouldn't have done. Now you're going to ask them to vote if they want an investigation? I know there's a couple attorneys on the board. That'd be asking like a potential criminal, if you want to investigate him? Well, of course, they're gonna say no. If there is stuff going on other than, if there's more than one person, or two people, or three people involved, how would you ever get an investigation done? Because all you have to do is talk to a few people. And from what the attorney said, some of this stuff could be a felony. You have to look at that policy. If you want to investigate something, it can't be done that way because you're asking somebody that could have done something wrong if they want to investigate it. That just, to me, seems absolutely ludicrous. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is it for public comments tonight. All right, next we have our report from Emily Jones.
All right. Post-secondary night is going to be at SPAS on Wednesday. There's gonna be 80 representatives from two and four-year schools that are going to be there, and it's gonna be from 5:30 to 7:30. There's going to be a choir concert tomorrow at SPAS at 7:30, and we invite all of you to come. The ACT testing was held for the juniors last Tuesday and Wednesday, and it went extremely well. Only 12 juniors missed the first day, and 13 missed the second day, so that was really incredible. And there's gonna be makeup tests on Tuesday, March 17, and Wednesday, March 18. The SPAS boys' basketball team is currently competing in the WIAA tournament, and they're going to be competing against Nina High School on Thursday at 7:00 PM in Menasha. And this Saturday, there's going to be a GSafe Conference at SPAS, and at the Fernandez Center, there's going to be a health fair tomorrow.
Thank you, Emily. All right, Meg, do you have a WSB report?
No, we're gonna be talking about the resolution later, and I think that'll cover what, how we're looking to move forward as a committee.
Okay, sounds good. President's report, Consolidated Task Force schedule we'll have to the board early next week, actually later this week. So that will begin after spring break, and what we'll be doing, just so the public is aware, if you missed it, we are going to, one school at a time, start going through all, any building that was mentioned in the Consolidated Task Force between now and June so that we kind of get a chance to see everything. There is a group that is filming the exact same thing right now. They're a couple steps ahead of us. All of this will be available online, if you want to see what the suggestions are. They all will be posted as they're filmed or all together.
Very good.
Okay, so each one will be posted as it's filmed, so that'll be on the webpage, if you want to see what the suggestions are in the Consolidated Task Force report. Superintendent search update. We give a brief explanation as to why Wednesday, the 11th, was chosen. First of all, we try to not choose Wednesdays ever, just because it's a kind of a night that families need, and it's religious instruction night. However, that was the week it had to be, and with a couple of our teams going to state, it was the only option that entire week where there wouldn't have been a state game if everyone had gone forward exactly how they were. So it was the best we could do. I know it's post-secondary night, hoping that people get a chance to come and hear from our two superintendent candidates. There'll be sessions during the day here. Those were, those are smaller. People would have been invited. If it's something you're interested in, if you're watching and you were not asked, please contact me. My email's on the webpage, and I'm sure we can work on getting you in. There's a lot of categories between students, parents, teachers, staff, that sort of thing. Otherwise, the public is invited to an open session, Ben Franklin, 6 to 8, on Wednesday night. Each candidate will have one of those two hours. They will not be speaking with each other in the room. I'll be there just to introduce and walk away. The board will not be there. I mean, I can't forbid anybody from being there, but it's not the plan, it's for the public to speak. The following Monday, the 16th, we don't have a time and a location yet. I'm gonna say we're gonna do what we've been doing, which is 7 to 8. We're gonna have a board listening session, which is going to allow people to come in and tell us specifically what they're thinking about the superintendent search. Everybody will have had a little bit of time to research the candidates, ask them what they want to know, come back and give us feedback. We're interested in what you think. So that is Monday, the 16th, from 7 to 8. The, we'll make sure that the location is posted in the papers, we're just trying to find one that isn't taken right now. Wisconsin Rapids Consortium.
Excuse me, can I ask a question about your number two, then?
Yes.
Are we going to be doing a Survey Monkey for, after we do the meet and greet?
Yes.
Okay. So that'll be in addition to the Monday, the 16th?
Right.
For the groups, not for the board?
Right. Yep. So for the groups that come in, what she's asking, as the groups come in, what we're gonna do is have a Survey Monkey set up so that you can let us know what you thought of the candidates, as you, how they answer the questions. I'm not, we haven't determined exactly what's gonna be on it, but it's gonna be something that's gonna be, so the information comes directly to the board right then and there. Utilize the, are we gonna be handing out Chromebooks, is that what the plan was? So if you come to one of those sessions, you'll be handed a Chromebook, you fill it out right there, and then we'll have the information immediately. So that's the, that's the current plan. Wisconsin Rapids, any other questions on that?
No, I just was gonna clarify, that's on the 11th. Not on the 16th. We'll just have all the information together for us on the 16th.
On the 16th, we're just listening, but yes.
Yes, I meant, but we'll have that information, we should.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Well, and I guess I've also requested...
Well, and I guess I've also requested either we as a board, I mean, I as an individual will do it, but I think we, as a board, if we can send out an email to current parents, we probably also have a listing for retired staff. Many of, and current staff, have worked with or are currently working with one or both of our candidates. And I would like to be able to send out to them our direct contact information. I mean, my email, my phone number, in case people want to get in touch with us and provide us with that direct input if they're not able to be at either of those sessions. So we could somehow make available for them a list.
And I thought.
A more direct list of, here are the board members, here are their phone numbers, here are their emails. If you want to get in touch with them, provide input in terms of your past experience and knowledge and thoughts about the candidates.
And I thought the Survey Monkey was going to be online for anyone, that we weren't going to do the Chromebooks. I thought that was what the plan was.
Okay. So tell me what it looks like and what you're thinking.
I thought it was a combination. Well, I know that was an original idea to bring those, but then it was discussed that we'd do the Survey Monkey. So just what Meg said, other people that aren't able to attend the event will still be able to give their input and, you know, contact us and whatever.
Sure. Perhaps we could, perhaps we could print the Survey Monkey address, the internet address, on pieces of paper and hand it out to people so that they can take it with them.
Just put it on our website.
And it should be on our website.
Right. But I think it's just really convenient if you can just give that website address to people and then just say, okay, you've met with them. You know, when you get home, you've had a few minutes to think about this. Fill out the Survey Monkey. I also have to say, I did send the listening schedule address to a member of Sparta. And then she forwarded, I believe, she told me she did, forwarded it on to all Sparta members. So I think that that information, it only had my email address for response. It didn't everybody else's. But I'm thinking that that did get out to members of Sparta in any event.
I think the gist of what we're saying here is we'd like to hear from you. Your thoughts on.
Yeah, that's the bottom line.
On the candidates. You know, this is someone who represents all of us as a district. And we're very interested in what you have to say as members of the public, teachers, staff, business owners, whatever your role may be in this. We would like to hear from you. All of our information is on the school website. All of our email addresses, phone numbers, or you can call Bliss and get them too if it's something you're having a hard time getting a hold of. But it is on the website. Wisconsin Rapids Consortium, Chris Attila and I went to a consortium in Rapids that they pulled together. Very grateful there were some legislators there that we were able to listen to. I think the main thing I want people to know from it is it's a group of elected school officials who have decided that it's time to be heard in one voice again, as opposed to all of us just kind of yelping things out there. Big enough changes coming up that we need to unify our voice and express what we're thinking. And so the consortium's going to meet regularly. Everybody will be, the next one's in Port-au-Prince in May. But it's just board members and administration getting together and saying, this is what's going on in the state, letting our legislators know what we think, and then kind of creating a unified voice to speak to them. Introduction of candidates. I don't, oh, there's Sam. Sam Levine, who spoke earlier, is one of our candidates. And Judy Ranow is a candidate. Also, Meg Erler and I are up for election. Negotiations update. The only update I have is that Wednesday, which clearly is a very busy night, from 6 to 8, will be the negotiations with the SPAEA here. Thank you.
I believe we also have a negotiation set with Ask Me. I think, is it the next Wednesday?
Thought it was Tuesday.
Is it, yeah, I think you're right. Yeah, Tuesday. So teachers are 6 to 8.
The 17th.
Ask Me is from 5 to 7.
I apologize, it is Wednesday, the 18th.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 18th, from 5 to 7, is Ask Me also here. And is that open as well?
No, that's, I believe that's closed.
Yeah. SPAEA is an open session. Ask Me is a closed. That's all I have. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
I just want to point out a couple of things. Excuse me, I neglected to put in the URL where the virtual tours are going to be. They'll be posted on our website, and I'll put out a notice about that. Todd Vanderloop's production, video production, Two Class has been doing an outstanding job. It's not just the filming of the tours, but they've done a great job editing and putting some things around it. So I think you'll appreciate that very much. And as Angel mentioned later this week, I'll send out the schedule for the in-person tours on a regular basis. Also wanted to point out the number of administrative applicants for the four administrative positions we have open, which is a pretty strong sign that the district is very attractive to leaders within the state and out of state in terms of the number that have applied for those various positions. And the last thing I just want to mention is the work that Carrie Vries, science teacher at Ben Franklin, has done with her students in Stanford University in creating a microscope curriculum that'll NBU's literally around the world. A great job on her part in following up on a student, Robert Hens's attention about this opportunity. So thank you to Carrie. Thank you to Robert and Carrie's students for doing that and going outside the walls. And I'll be glad to take any questions about the report.
Chris?
Letter C, School Choice. It says on here that the open records request that School Choice Wisconsin made would be attached. I didn't get a copy of it. And I'm wondering, I don't know if anybody else got a copy of it. And I'm wondering if, in light of the fact that it doesn't appear anyone else got a copy, maybe you could just describe what that was. This is really concerning to me, this open records request that they're doing around the state.
Yeah, this is a modified request from what was done in Green Bay and got lots of media attention. So this particular request is strictly for the addresses of any student in the district. Doesn't ask for names, doesn't ask for telephone numbers, just asks for addresses, which is a public directory situation. So in consulting with legal counsel, what we've done is we've, has it gone out?
March 23rd.
March 23rd, we're going to send out a notice to parents and saying to them, here's the request that's been made. You have a right to opt out. Please return if you're going to opt out.
Is that going out via email?
No, hard copy.
Well, out of a box.
Well.
Return hard copy.
Right. They have to return.
If they return it, then they will not have their address provided to School Choice Wisconsin. Okay, thank you. Very good.
And will there be an explanation of who's requested it?
I don't know why that didn't get included. I, you know what, I'll send out the letter.
Okay.
And we'll make it a part of the minutes, so. But I'll send it out right away tonight or tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the superintendent's report? Next, we're onto the consent agenda. And what we've decided to do, A through E, there are quite a few errors that people noticed. So if you can just let us know what they are. Sarah's going to take notes. What we'll do is write them down, correct it, and have them on the next agenda. But it would be easier if everybody just told us what they've noticed. So did you have some, Kim?
Yeah. I guess the first part of it where it says page 6 of 7, number 12, the third paragraph, the count of the votes are wrong. There should be two noes. Okay? On page for the minutes of Monday, the February 23rd, wait, I apologize. March 2nd, number 3, is everybody there? The nine o'clock one. Number 3, the second paragraph, the count is wrong of the votes. Should be 7 and 2, and I don't think anybody abstained. And the time is wrong. It was not at 9:08 AM, uh, PM. I don't know if we can go back because otherwise then Jeff Evil arrived very early. Getting on the next one, March 2nd, the timing also is incorrect. The 9:08 PM again should be, I think it's 1 something it should be. I think that's the only ones that I caught. And I apologize that I didn't get this to Amy sooner because I have a very sick laptop.
I had just one other, and that is the Friday, February 20th. The closed session does not, there are blanks for the.
The times.
The times moved in and reconvene. But I, yeah, I had seen the other ones as well, Kim.
Anything else? Can we just approve those changes or do you think they need to come back?
I would feel more comfortable if she had the opportunity to go back and look just so that she can get those times right.
Okay.
If it were me, I would want to do that.
Do we need a motion to table A through E?
If you table it, you have to pick it back up off the table.
You have to postpone it, just postpone it.
Postpone it.
So do we need a motion to postpone it? No? Okay.
You need a motion to potentially approve 8F.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve F. Or E, ENF or just F?
8F.
8F.
Need a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments on 8F?
Yes. I did not receive my copies of the superintendent's expenses. So I will be voting no to approve that. And I'm assuming they will be coming shortly.
That'll be up for discussion during the policy 166 that's being proposed?
Well, seeing as I made the request before the policy is being enacted, I would believe that it should be fulfilled.
Well, I've talked with the board president about it, and that'll come up for discussion at 166.
Oh, okay.
And I will also be voting no because I asked some questions and because, and I'm not going to say that, I didn't get a response. With my computer crashing, I didn't get a chance to get my answer, my questions answered. So.
Anything else on 8F? Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
No.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Motion carries 8-2.
How about 7-2?
It can't be 8-2, so.
About 7-2.
Oh, 7-2. It's your count yourself, but goodness, no.
The ghost board member.
Well, 8-2, that's interesting.
Okay. Number nine, Business Services. We'll start with a Business Services Committee Chair Report. Business Services didn't meet because we had superintendent interviews that started at 9:00 AM and went all day. Actually, would have cut right into the Business Service Committee.
Right. So I do not have a report and would ask if we could just move right into number two, looking at the audit, the RFP for the audit. And, yeah, I would say let's hear from Dr. Owens.
Good evening. We did our RFP for Audit Services and sent them out to a number of firms, seven in all, and we received three bids back. We then evaluated them on a basis of a score form. 25% of the evaluation was done on the basis of price. 75% was done on the basis of technical data and criteria. The firm with the highest score was Schenk. And our recommendation is to award the Audit Services to Schenk.
I will make a motion to select Schenk Business Solutions to perform the district's annual independent audit for the next three years.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have one question. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you? Is Schenk the same company that did the audits the last three years?
Yes.
Okay. Is that helpful?
Very helpful, yes. So they're familiar with things that go on. They know the time involved. They're familiar with the records, that type of thing.
Great. That's all I want. I couldn't, I dug at home looking for my audit, couldn't find it anyplace. It's in my room where all my school board stuff is, but it's lost in there.
Kim, did you have a question?
Yeah. I mean, Schenk's done it for numerous years, haven't they? Numerous years. So it is good to have someone that knows the system. It's also good to have someone with fresh eyes. My question is, is I see that we have how you evaluate them, but do we get a copy of how they ended up with their scores? I mean, I know you have it here.
It didn't include those details. It provided you with a copy of what the form looked like, but we didn't include our individual scoring.
Okay. That would be nice to know. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff?
Because they, these other firms that don't have intimate details like Schenk does, their price doesn't increase, correct?
Their price what?
Doesn't increase. They don't charge us more because they don't know where something is or, I mean, the price is what it is.
Well, each firm has a different pricing structure. I do not know the way in which each firm prices. We put down, you know, basically what they would charge to carry out an audit. And all of them have done school audits. And we also hosted a time, a day, when they could come in and sit down with us, ask us questions and have a discussion. Two of the three firms took us up on that. And we sat in our offices and had discussions. And they were able to look over any documents they wanted or ask us any questions. That opportunity was afforded to all of the people.
So who showed up?
Schenk showed up and, who was the other one, Bill? I don't remember.
Clifton Larson Allen.
Pardon? Clifton, house, okay. Clifton Larson Allen showed up, and then they later determined, decided not to submit a bid.
Any other questions for Tom? All right. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries. 9-0. All right. Bus bids.
Okay. The next item is the bus bids, annual process. This year, we are looking to replace 15 buses, 10 of which are conventional, 72 passenger buses, 10 are conventional. Four additional ones are also conventional, but we are requesting that these units have underbody storage. The reason being is it's our attempt to begin to acquire a few more pieces of hardware that we can use to increase the amount of field trips and activities that we participate in. We do about 50% of the field trips and sporting events now. The other 50% is picked up by lemurs. That's been in place for many, many years, long before I was here because we do not have the frames and the number of drivers to be able to do it all. And we need our drivers to run our routes, et cetera, during the day. We're hoping to expand the number of drivers and acquire a few more of those field trip activities, et cetera. So that will give us four more units that we can use that have underbody storage than when we go on longer trips, et cetera. We can use some of those facilities. And one is wheelchair-equipped, et cetera. As indicated in the memo, we had bids go out. We received bids from Midstate Truck Nelson's Bus Service and Wisconsin Bus Sales. And Nelson's Bus Service provided a cash buyout, but they did not provide the leasing information. So because their bid was incomplete, it was disqualified, So because their bid was incomplete, it was disqualified and it didn't provide the lease information which we wanted in particular. Wisconsin Bus Sales did submit a bid on time, but two days later discovered they erred and they withdrew that. And they did send me a rebid which I rejected. They sent it to me via email, I rejected it. I emailed him back, I also called and explained to him that we had to maintain the integrity of the system and that I would not be accepting it because the RFP clearly states that if they withdraw the bid, they're disqualified. And so he was disqualified. And that left Midstate Truck, whose bid was reasonable and they have good units that we've been pleased with in the past. And so our recommendation is to approve the lease purchase of 15 72 passenger buses from Midstate Truck Service, as indicated in the motion.
Can I ask a question? Have we, have we worked with Midstate Truck previously?
Yes, we purchased buses from them.
Okay, so, okay, maybe this is, you tell me if this is unethical, okay? But it looks to me like if we were to redo the RFP again, to do it a second time, we'd probably save about $10,000 if Wisconsin Bus Sales came in and did the RFP, if they responded correctly. And I guess that's my question is, should we consider doing that?
I considered doing that, but the timeline is such that it wasn't advantageous to us. The other thing is, is if you rebid it, you have to rebid it for everyone.
Sure, right.
So the others can change their prices too, so I don't know how that comes out. It gets difficult when you do purchasing, I've done it for years, and sometimes people make a mistake, et cetera. They pull their bid and they'll say, "I made a mistake, can I put my bid back in?" They don't mean any harm, but that's not fair to the other bidders and it degrades the process.
Sure, I understand what you did and I would, that was the right thing to do. But at this point, when I look at the numbers and crunch them, it's about a $10,000 difference and...
Well, I would also point off, we...
Oh, yeah.
We have somewhat of a...
Yeah, 64,000.
The Midstate Trucking, the units that they have are, in our opinion, a little bit better quality at this particular point. We've had some issues with the Bluebird buses, not serious ones, but the coolant has browned in the Bluebird buses and we've used an additive to test it out and that has temporarily corrected the problem. We're also going to test a new coolant in it to see if that withstands the issue that's going on. They're all good buses, but the bus that the Midstate does provide is, we feel, a little less maintenance-free, a little more maintenance-free. But we could redo it, but timeline starts to get a problem in terms of getting these units here in time for school to start.
Chris?
Tom, have we used this trade-in on other...
I'm sorry, what?
You mentioned in here that they could be used for a trade-in on subsequent purchases.
Yes.
Have we done that?
Yes.
We have?
We've traded in and we've also sold.
Okay.
Yep, Kim?
So you're saying the buses from Midstate Truck Service and the buses from Wisconsin Bus Sales are two different...
Two different brands.
Brands, the buses. And the one from Midstate Trucking is what? Do you remember? Because I'm assuming the other ones are the Bluebirds.
I can't remember the name at all. What is it?
They're IC brand buses.
International.
Internationals, okay, thank you.
And the other ones are the Bluebirds that you're talking about?
They're both good buses, it's just that sometimes when they come off assembly lines, some years, one particular brand is maybe a few, little less maintenance hassles than another one, et cetera, so.
So are you ready for motion?
I am.
Okay, well, I've moved to approve the lease purchase of 15 72 passenger buses per bid from Midstate Truck Service, per their bid of $1,576,287.90 to be paid at $262,714.65 per year for six years.
I need a second, please.
Second.
So back to the issue of the difference between the buses. Do we have documentation of this, that the buses are, I guess for lack of a better term, inferior compared to Midstate?
Yeah, we do have documentation. Inferior might be too strong a word, but I know what you're trying, you're searching for a word. We've had some issues with the Bluebird buses that we purchased last year, as I mentioned, with the coolant. We are documenting that, we're working with a company on it. And as I mentioned, the folks over there have been doing a good job trying to deduce what the situation is. They put in an additive that has, the laboratories come back and said you can extend the use of the coolant as a result of using that additive. And our next attempt is some of the other buses, the Internationals, use a different type of coolant. We're going to try that coolant in the Bluebird bus. Correct me if I say anything wrong in the back. That's correct so far, okay. And see if that resolves that situation. So that's a principal issue that we have going with them.
But the whole thing behind these leases is they're under warranty for, is it five years?
Right.
So really, it's the last year if there's any problems is, that's where it would kind of, the rubber would hit the road, so to speak.
Sure, but they may be under warranty, but you're still dealing with the problems, so.
I just, me personally, I have, I mean, we're talking even with trade-in value, if you give them that, that they give a higher trade-in value, you're still talking like $57,000 difference. I mean, if there's nothing mechanically different and, you know, the wheels on the bus go round and round, I mean, why the decision to spend an extra, well, call it $60,000?
Could we hear from John?
Please, please.
Apparently, yes.
Guys, excuse me, I've been homesick all day, so I only went about two hours. Basically, let's talk about the Bluebirds for a minute. They do have the same engine as the Internationals do, okay? They got the ISB 6, 7-liter engine in them. They are running the same heating system as the, they both run the same heating system, they run Berkstrom heaters. The problem we're having with the Bluebirds when I came here about two years ago was that the coolant was turning brown. We took the buses over to Cummins and Cummins said this is an issue. They analyzed the coolant and they said this coolant needs to be changed immediately. That was bus number 69 that started it all. I drove 69 down to the dealer in Madison along with a whole bunch of test tubes of coolant from across the fleet. It was turning brown. They had it all analyzed and they said this has to go out of these buses immediately. So we followed the engine manufacturer, which was Cummins, we followed their directions and we changed out this coolant. The problem we experienced was 69, 500 miles later, after the coolant was changed out, followed their direction, it was turning brown again. That led me on quite a search. I got over 60 pages of documentation of things I've done to try to find out what's causing this problem. One of the things we looked at was electrolysis, because I know electrolysis can turn coolant colors. And what electrolysis says is that, say you have a vehicle that doesn't have a good ground, the electricity will look for another place to find grounding inside the bus. So I had that with another bus in another district I worked at, that the coolant started to smell funny and turn colors and we found it had a bad ground. None of our buses were suffering from electrolysis. So that led me down another path. I started calling Berkstrom Manufacturing, which is the radiator, the heater manufacturer. The heater manufacturer said, well, he had never heard of this issue. So then we went down another path and we went back to Cummins and said, "What is in your engine that's causing this too?" Because we had high aluminum content in these coolant samples. Cummins said, "There's hardly any aluminum in our engine." So then we had to figure out who manufactures the radiators for Bluebird and Bluebird apparently buys the radiators on bid. After doing a little looking around, mechanic and I figured out it was a company named Titan X that manufactures the radiators. And that's the thing that's different from what's in the Internationals and the Bluebirds is the radiator manufacturer. And I also found out that the radiator is probably where most aluminum is in the bus. So from what I can tell, modi, oh, go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
You bet.
So I think kind of the bottom line is, are these buses, the ones that come from Midstate, are they $57,000 better than the Bluebirds that come from Wisconsin Bus Sales?
Well, the issue with the Bluebirds right now is the coolant is still causing us some problems yet and I'm afraid of losing engines. And the Bluebirds are about halfway through their leasing cycle, they got about two years to go yet. So I'm afraid we could wind up, if we continue this, with having to replace a bunch of engines at the time these buses go off lease. So I'm thinking, yes, it could possibly be $57,000 better considering the cost of replacing an engine, which I know is a minimum of like $5,000, so.
You sound like an expert. I'm going with him.
Well, thank you, but go ahead.
If you said they're only like two or three years old, are they not under warranty or because of this part only, they're not under warranty?
The Bluebirds are all under warranty. Actually, all of our buses we buy with a six-year warranty. The problem I have with the six-year warranty, and I've tried to get this out of the vendors, I asked them when I first came here, "How much is the six-year warranty costing us?" There was only one vendor that was able to name the price of the warranty and that was International. International said it's adding $6,000 to the price of the bus. And this is a bumper-to-bumper warranty. And International, I will admit, has been very, very good about their warranties. We had an issue here last spring where we noticed that the charge air coolers on our buses were kind of developing like an egg-sized crack or hole in them, they're actually bulging. And we found out that there was ice forming in the charge air coolers. And at first, International was going to prorate the warranty on some of these buses and I raised a fit with them and they brought up someone from Madison. And after the discussion, they went back and caucused and they said, "No, we're going to replace all of these charge air coolers for free." So they went, that saved us probably about $2,000 a bus. So International has been very, very good on the warranty. Now back to the Bluebird issue too. You know, Bluebird has taken our papers and sent them over to their factory in Georgia. They sent them over to their other people and we've come back with denials most of the time. This has turned into nothing but a big finger-pointing episode. You didn't do this, you didn't do that, we did this over here, we did that over there. So we are, we are trying to improve better our policy of checking our coolant here so we got better documentation, because that's what they're pointing their fingers at us now. They're saying, "We didn't document things good enough, we didn't check them enough." My defense is, wait a minute, these buses were two and a half years old. They were under the limits for the coolant testing and having additives added to them. So right now, it's turning into a big finger-pointing thing. And when Bluebird officially, initially came in with this really lower bid, after they submitted to us, I called them and I said, "You know, I'm very, very concerned about this." Because if you look at their initial bid, I don't know if it was in there, it was like a quarter of a million dollars lower. And I said, "Yes, I think it's a great way to save money, but I'm concerned about what's going to happen to this district down the road." You know, we already got like 12 to 14 Bluebirds in the fleet, we add 15 more. If we have this coolant problem, are we going to have over 15 more bad engines?
John, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
I think the question was, if an engine fails in a unit of a Bluebird, is that covered by warranty?
That's going to depend...
Replacement or the repair would be covered by warranty?
That's going to depend on a lot of issues. Number one, they're going to look at...
Shortly, briefly, on what?
Okay, they're going to look at our record-keeping, because right now, they're pointing, they're fingering us saying, "This coolant issue is because we didn't have good enough record-keeping." So it's been...
If your records are accurate, would it then be covered by...
No, I understand what you're, I understand what you were saying with the warranty.
Right, right.
And that is, there's also, it's not just the mechanical failure of the unit itself, it's the operational loss of the use of the unit. And if it happens during, you know, school, you know, when we operate school, that's, that's, could be catastrophic, catastrophic if we lose two, three, four units. So we want units that don't give us problems and that's the reason for the...
There's a lot of whereas's and wherefores in the warranty. And like with this coolant situation, just as a sample, I've been going around and around about this for a year and a half and it's been nothing but a bunch of finger-pointing. So I guess in the end, if we do have an engine failure, we're going to have to look at what caused the engine, why the engine, what's wrong with the engine first and what's causing that failure and go from there.
More finger-pointing.
Right, 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 right. And I will say, like I said, with the IC warranty, they've been very good because I got all those charge air coolers replaced for free and I know that saved us at least $2,000 a bus because we raised a little bit of a fit and they also know that right now, three-quarters of our fleet is IC, so.
Does anyone else have questions for John? Who's up here?
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, John.
You're welcome. Oh, before I go, guys, I just want to say too, don't be a stranger. Come down to the bus garage, visit us, talk to us and see what we're doing. I'm going to go off the subject over here, but there's a lot of people in here that have slammed at these board meetings. There's a lot of great things happening down at the bus garage, so come on down, see us. You know, just if you're in the neighborhood, drop by, we'd really like to see you.
Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions for Tom? Is everybody ready to vote? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries 9-0.
He's a heck of a salesman, eh?
Okay, Governor's Budget and Finances surrounding reopening Jackson School presentation. This is information only.
Down in South Parisville.
No documentation for this?
I think it's just going to be this.
But no, I mean, no handouts or anything that was in the packet?
I don't have anything.
Just want to make sure something wasn't missing.
Okay, just a little review of some of the talking points, which will be provided to you later. And this focuses strictly on the educational aspect, the CPI portion of the budget.
Can you make a suggestion? Can you use the microphone so the folks at home can hear you?
Ian, will this come out of here? Wouldn't do it?
No, it's all right, if you want to hit screen. Okay, according to the Governor's proposal, there is an item in the AIDS called per pupil categorical aid. It's $150 per year as a categorical aid. That means it's not part of the general aid or equalization aid. It's outside therefore of the revenue limit. It's a separate categorical designated aid for a flat amount per pupil. It's $150. If it were left in the budget, we'd get $150 in the first year of the biennial and $150 in the second year of the biennial to increase to be $300. They are suggesting, the Governor suggested in that budget to cut that. He then proposed to add in the second year of the biennial, $165 per pupil aid. So 300 less the 165, that's how they budget in the biennial process. That'd be a net loss of $135 to the district per student. The proposal would translate into a loss of just over $1.1 million in revenue to the district if that were to actually happen. And in my footnote, I'm just pointing out that categorical aid is not part of the revenue limit, so it does not increase our base or in this case, decrease our base either. Next slide. The revenue limit itself, the proposal provides no increase in the revenue limit per pupil calculation. And last year, we received $75 a student and at $100 per pupil, that increase comes to about $510,000. In 2014, the district revenue limit increased about a million dollars. So at this particular point, no increase is being expected at all in the budget. $75 would amount to about $185,000 to $200,000 in that range. Next slide. General aid, also known as equalization aid. The proposal provides no increase in general aid in 15, 16. In 16, 17, general aid would increase under the proposal by $108 million statewide. However, that increase has no corresponding increase in the revenue limit per pupil amount. So that provides no additional funds to the district. It's just a matter of changing levy and revenue limit, or aid, general aid and revenue limit. This shows you a simplification of the impact. Our 2014 general budgeted revenue, according to our October release, was 76. roughly 3 million and a loss of 1.1 million, obviously takes us down to 75.1 million. The thing that's important here, I think, is the note at the bottom. The Governor's budget is a proposal and the legislature often changes such a proposal, no matter what party is in office, if they're the same party or the opposing party, they very often change all or parts of that proposal. So it remains possible that no such cut will occur and that some increased amount may be allowed in the revenue limit. We just don't know, but we should know probably by May or June. When one party has all of the branches, has the Senate Assembly and the Governor's Office, it usually doesn't drag too far into the summer. So we should probably know by May or June what's actually going to happen. I've heard, I've talked to several legislators and all of the ones that I've talked to, as well as a session that I chaired on the new law seminar, the legislators indicated that they thought they'd be doing something and changing this proposal. Next slide, please. Oh, the school levy credit. Many folks don't really understand this, but in 1996 and 97, the legislature and the governor took away from school general aid monies, $469 million. Those were school aids that we were getting to run our school districts. They took that away and created what's called the school levy credit. And that is money that goes to municipalities for the purpose of a credit on the tax bill to lower property taxes. Because they call it a school levy credit and the source of the money originally came from the general fund, general aid rather, and for political purposes, they refer to it as, continue to refer to as support for schools. So when they went to the three-legged stool where they created two-thirds funding for education and then, you know, remember the, all the other aspects of that, the revenue limit, et cetera, QEO, they claimed the two-thirds, they used the school levy credit to get to that two-thirds figure. We, we being school districts in the state of Wisconsin, never see that money. We're never used, can't be used for our operational purposes at all. It goes directly to a... It goes directly to a figure on a piece of paper for a reduction in the levy. Now, the Governor is proposing in the proposed budget to increase that by an additional $105.6 million statewide. Currently, it's been operating for several years. It began as 469 million, and for many years, it's been operated 747 million. One of the advantages of this, from the legislator's standpoint, that they did this, the reason, one of the reasons they did this, was to be able to get property tax relief to high-property-value districts that weren't getting it through the aid formula. So, that's the attractiveness of that. But in terms of the school levy credit, it really is, doesn't do anything for schools, it's, it's just, it's a credit, and they call it a school levy credit now. Next slide, please. Rural schools, during the rural school task force, they came up with several suggestions, and in the Governor's proposal, an additional 50, or excuse me, $5 million statewide for high-cost transportation. Some of the rural schools have vast areas to transport kids, much bigger than our school district, and there aren't as many students, and that also ties in with sparsity aid, which is the next one. Not only distances, or perhaps even high cost, depending on involved students, et cetera, but sparsity, where you have high, great distances with few students, it becomes economically difficult with some of the aid formulas, so sparsity aid is a little bump up in that. There's also some money that they're looking for broadband expansion, $25 million for Teach 2.0. That is a different kind of a Teach program, with the numbers in the classroom are much higher. And then, also whole grade sharing, a hold harmless. They're talking there about allowing some schools, smaller schools, to actually share whole grades. For example, if you had two close school districts in proximity, one might take all the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders for both school districts, and then, all of the high school students might go to the other district. And if they did that, there's some language in there to hold those districts harmless, so they're not penalized as a result of these students being shifted back and forth. Just some ways to be a little more economical. Voucher expansion, this one's a little tricky. The proposal removes the caps for schools and kids, and, as you know, in 1516, all new schools and we're seeing, all the students in the state-wide programs are funded through a general aid deduction. That would be new. What this basically does is, every school district that has a student that goes into the voucher program from a district, so let's say Stevens Point, let's say we have five kids that leave our district and participate in the voucher program. They don't actually have to leave our district, they don't have to have been enrolled in our school, they only have to be residents of our district. They could have been in a parochial school, they could have been homeschooled, they could have been virtual school. But if they reside within the boundaries of our district and go to this voucher program, we will lose general aid because of that, based on whatever our aid is per student. Then, that happens in every district throughout the state where these students are, voucher students, are drawn from. That money is pooled, and then divided by the total voucher students to get an amount of revenue per voucher student. That's how the proposal's written. Whether that will survive, whether it will survive in, or whether it will survive in its current proposal, you know, I don't know. That has to go through joint finance and the legislative siphon, so. Some other smaller parts, assessments, we've heard about that. Well, that's not exactly small, that's made quite a stir. That's, we're talking about having just the test for one year, and then maybe move on to another one. But the proposal is that they will eliminate the new test that they're doing, the smarter balance test, just have that for one year, and then DPI has to choose a new test. Then accountability, the AB1, that stands for Assembly Bill 1. Assembly Bill was looking for letter grades to grade schools' performances. The Senate Bill, SB1, does not have that in there, they did not want to do that. So, that's going back and forth, and I don't know exactly how that's going to play out, but obviously, if the Senate holds firm and they refuse to do that, it's not going to happen, so we'll see what happens there. And they want to have multiple assessments, obviously, and not rely on one thing. 220 doesn't affect us here, that's mostly in the larger urban areas, in southeastern Wisconsin, Wausau has it, somewhere along the Fox Valley. And those, that has to do with integration, transportation, and now, so many of the schools' proportion of the racial structure is such that they no longer justify the moving of students, because the numbers are already high within the proportions of the student population. So, they're proposing to close that to any new students, and allow the ones that are there existing to phase out. Probably that will survive. Number 10, CISA state aid. That eliminates state aid to the CISA's, and allows the school districts to, participation in the CISA's to be voluntary. Some CISA's are affected disparately from others. One has perhaps no impact at all, because they rely very little on that aid. Other districts may have designed their structure such that they do, so they'll have to deal with that. And then, alternative teacher license, and this is ways to get more teachers into some of the harder-to-fill jobs, or into any jobs for that matter. People who may come from the work world that have a BA, or have experience in things, like, say you have a tech teacher, and you might have somebody who has taught for many years in a voc tech school, or in private industry, is extremely capable and knowledgeable what goes on, and has a BA, and has education. If they pass some tests, state-level tests, and do some certification qualifications, they can, they can become licensed under the proposal. Subject to your questions, that would conclude the overview.
There was an editorial, and I want to make sure I'm remembering it correctly, there was an editorial in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel yesterday, and the subject matter was basically Aldo Leopold, and many of the things in the current Governor's proposal relating to environmental programs in the state and the DNR. But one of the other comments it made is that the program that UWSP has been doing for a number of years with respect to environmental education, which our schools have benefited from and been very involved in, has also been defunded. So, there are two particular programs within UWSP, so that's a, that's another program that is, that we're looking at, our students and our classrooms taking...
Is that specifically targeted, or is that part of the 300 million?
It's specifically indicated in the editorial that that, that those two programs have been defunded in the Governor's current budget proposal. So, I think, I think, of course, that the budget proposal is such an incredibly huge document, that it's taking time for people to weed through and be able to pull out all of the various impacts that our, that our educational community is going to suffer, because there are going to be strands in other parts of the budget that I don't think we're even aware right now, that are, that are going to be a concern.
And Tom, I would imagine, with that alternative teaching, that there's going to be some pushback?
I have not heard of much pushback on that.
I'm just wondering if teachers with degrees and have a concern. I know that at the state convention, the Governor spoke about that. I mean, in some ways, it makes sense, but I can see...
So many of the other issues are much more sensitive, that really isn't an item that...
I guess.
You know...
Well, I guess if you spent, you know, four years, and maybe $40,000, $50,000 getting your degree, and then someone came in...
Well, I think it's oriented not to the individual employee, it's oriented to the schools and kids, and if you can find an employee, a potential employee who's fantastic, I mean...
Right.
You know, has worked 40 years in the field, or 30 years in the field, or something like that, and is highly qualified...
Oh, right. No, I understand both sides of it, I was just...
The school board's possibly an alternative for some different type of candidate.
Based on your experience dealing with the budget process that starts out in January and has to conclude by June 30th, based on your experience, should we be worried that this $1.1 million cut is going to happen?
Well, obviously, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell you, I will worry, but generally, in the past, when, when things have come out in this nature, with a lot of lead time and people to discuss, there generally is enough pushback to blend this down to where it's not as draconian, all right? The things that catch us by surprise are the ones that come up suddenly, nobody had a clue, and bam, it's there. That happened with revenue limits, that happened with QEO, that happened with levy credit, school levy credit thing, that kind of happened with Act 10, you know, I mean, just bam, and it was there, you know? So, generally, when it plays out like this, we have some room to move. There isn't too much we can do about it in the short term anyway, frankly, because the only large amounts of money that we can move around have to do with employees, have to do with the numbers of employees, et cetera, because that's the largest portion of our budget.
Sure, yeah, I get that. I just, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how worried I should be about this 1.1 million, potential million-dollar cut. And, and based on your experience, when they say they're going to cut us a $1.1 million, is your experience that, yep, they're going to cut $1.1 million? Or is your experience, oh, that's just a lot of hot air, they're only going to cut a half a million dollars, or they're not going to cut anything?
Well, I'll start out by saying I'm wrong in what I'm going to tell you.
Great. Love that.
Reading the tea leaves from my 40-plus years of experience, I would say they'll do something with this, and it won't, it won't wind up this draconian. That's my guess, or my guesstimate. And, you know, obviously, I, I don't control a thing, so I don't know what's going to happen, but based on experience, it's probable that this won't stay like this.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
And I would imagine, oh, I'm sorry, Greg, go ahead.
Just a comment. The real difference here is, and we've never had it before like this, Walker's running for president. Look who controls the legislature. This is a railroad, and unfortunately, we're going to be the caboose. And the reality of it, I honestly think, my personal opinion, and I could be wrong, and I hope I am, it's going to happen. Certain things out of this are going to have serious financial impacts on this district. And do you think that somebody who's running for president is going to allow the legislature to vote something different than what he has proposed? His party's going to stick with him. And that's, I mean, we have to be ready, worst-case scenario, for that to happen in our district.
On Friday, I hosted the CISA 5 superintendents, and we had several presentations made. One was by Mike Chilcar, our legal counsel, and another was by John Bales, who is the executive director of WASDA, the state superintendent's organization. And he and John Forrester, who is the lobbyist for the School Administrator Alliance, have been working very hard, obviously, with legislators about the proposed budget. The pushback that a lot of districts, including ours, has given to the legislators appears to be working. What John said to the group was, that the latest buzz from people in the Capitol was that they were not going to do anything. Now, he said he can't guarantee that, just like Tom said, whatever he's going to say is wrong. He said, "I can't guarantee this," he said, "but the buzz now is," he said, "that $150 loss in that first year." He said, "People are saying that's, even Republican legislators are saying, 'We can't do that.'" So, he was fairly confident that in the first year, nothing would happen, and that they would try to figure something out. But he said, "It's a process, and as Tom indicated, it'll be over sometime in May or June," but he was much more hopeful than, than certainly I was walking into that meeting before. But, you know, there are no guarantees.
Anyone else?
I, I just want to say, I really appreciate the information and the opportunity to talk about this a little bit, because I, having gone through this for the first time as a member of the board, I'm not quite sure what to expect. And as we have conversations with our constituents about finances, I think that it's important to have at least the basic understanding of what's been proposed, and I guess I share some of the same concerns that Jeff has. So, it's, I really appreciate this, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
All right, Educational Services, first thing is a report from the chair, Chris Scott.
Thanks. Educational Services met on Tuesday, March 3, and the two items that were on our agenda are on our board agenda tonight. Purchase of instructional materials. The French language teachers and the English language learning teachers, learner teachers, and the English language arts teachers spent about the last year studying and choosing some of the most comprehensive materials for the new curriculum cycle. They brought examples to the committee to show them. They're beautiful. I think they, they did a lot of work, a lot of research, and so, this, this item is up for action. It will be coming back to the board again, not back to the committee, and these materials have already been budgeted for, so we'll be looking for a, an approval of the National Group, National Geographic English Language Learner and French Language Resources. They're really, really some comprehensive materials. There was a lot of work put into this by the staff, and it's very appreciated. The second item is the Summer Melt Text Program. I'm going to ask Mr. Nian to give a little more of an explanation, but if you read through the materials, this is, there's about 40% of our high school graduates who have been accepted to college, but never follow through and show up. So, there's kind of a detach, and the Great Lakes Higher Education Corp. has offered a grant, and it's called the Summer Melt, and what it is, it's offering a bridge in having our counselors follow through in a texting program. And that would give information to the students, information that they need on dates, datelines, things they need to be doing or sending in. So, it's a little more complex than that, and perhaps if Mr. Nian's here, he can give a little more information when we go ahead and look at that for approval. So, that was...
He's walking...
Our meeting.
Walking around.
Greg, you want to address the Summer Melt program?
Yeah, he can do that. Do you want to do them now, or do the, on the agenda?
I thought you wanted to do...
No, I was going to say, we have to do this...
In just a bit, relax.
Yeah, sorry, Greg.
Have a seat. Don't go too far.
I was all excited to hear about it again.
All right, so, the first thing we have is a recommendation to purchase textbooks, instructional materials.
Oh, yeah. Okay, and I'd move to approve the first reading for the purchase of the National Geographic English Language Learner and the French Language Resources as presented, and to return to the board for a second reading.
I'll second that. All right, I need to ask the dumb question, sorry. What's the first reading? Why are we doing a first reading? What does that mean?
It means that we've always brought textbooks and instructional materials that required board approval to the board for 30 days, so that the board could actually view the materials.
Oh, wonderful, okay.
Because that's one of your primary responsibilities, is to approve the curriculum.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wonderful.
I did have a question, but this is, like Chris said, this is all budgeted, so, and they didn't go over their budget?
No.
Okay, you're just kind of informing us...
Right.
Okay, so, really, we already approved the budget, but we're approving it, approving it.
Right.
Okay, just want to make sure we're not micromanaging.
Nope.
Any other question? All right, we have motion in a second. Roll call, vote please. Ms. Shierick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Okay, now we have the Summer Melt program.
Is that melting?
Greg, oh, Greg, you're up.
Why did he leave?
I'll find him.
All right.
Oh, dear.
Do we need him? I mean...
Yeah, I have to say, this sounds like a cool program, I don't really, I mean, I think it's really...
Well, how about if I make a motion, and then we can wait for...
If we have questions, we might return by the time... If we have questions, he might return by the time he...
Right, how about that? So I would move to approve the Great Lakes Higher Education Corporation Summer Melt Texting Program and Grant Agreement, the District Signal One Data Sharing Agreement, and the District Directors and Visitors of the University of Virginia Research Agreement as outlined above and attached.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions?
Any questions for Greg, who I'm sure is going to be here any second?
I'll just note that we did have a pretty comprehensive conversation at the meeting because you've got the Great Lakes Loan Program, and you've got the University of Virginia, and they are looking to give our district $17,000 grant worth of services. So, I mean, we as a district need to understand that each party has their own motivations.
Yes.
I mean, Great Lakes clearly is interested in working to write more loans, and University of Virginia is clearly looking to increase a certain cohort of students that they're not seeing come into their school over the course of a summer. That being said, to the extent that our students who might be not moving to postgraduate education because they just don't know what step to take, or they forget, or they drop the ball on a date, this should be helpful. The one thing we, as a group, talked about is, there is the reality that there probably some kids within the SPAS community who could take advantage of this, but they don't have a cellphone. And so this program, it won't hit those kids. So that was the one substantive conversation that we had with staff to maybe do some creative thinking about how, since the counselors are going to be working with respect to this texting program, how there might be some opportunity to, in an upfront way, survey the kids about their interest in the program and their access to a cellphone, and then where there isn't that, whether there might be some other way that the district could reach out to those kids that might not have that access. So that was the...
They'll be looking into that.
That was the community's conversation about it.
Yeah, and try to find other avenues, or there may be other avenues. But the idea is, you know, if they're just not doing the follow-through, because they don't know what do they need to do, what paperwork, whatever, and they kind of get lost in the mix, and then we lose them, and then they don't go on because they don't have that information. And having a relationship with our counselors, as many of our students do, it makes sense. It's kind of like mom or dad saying, "Now, don't forget, you got to do this on this date." But they've got that relationship regarding education and looking out for their students. And so I think it's a positive. I'd like to lower that 40%.
Can I ask you a question? This, just to be clear, this isn't just for students that are going to the University of Virginia, though, right?
No, 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 no.
No, no, no. This is for anybody going on anything post-high school.
That's what I figured. I just wanted to make sure.
Two-year community college.
Yes, that's how I read it.
To help them bridge through and follow through.
Jeff?
Was there discussion about texting both the child and the parents?
Yes. Yes.
There he is.
But I bet we could just...
Because how many kids ignore texts?
Well, it's going to be more ignoring than having a text, a cellphone, because I bet you there's probably maybe 1.00 point that have, don't have a cellphone. But go ahead. I have other questions, too, but we'll let you answer that.
So my apologies. I thought that the textbooks would take a little more time than they did, so...
They're National Geographic.
So forgive me for, you know, thinking I could make it to the washroom. So I kind of missed the beginning of the discussion. I'm going to try not to repeat anything that's already been said, but I did hear the concern about, you know, the 40% or whatever number of students that perhaps may not have access to a smartphone. And when I broached that question with the representatives from the program, they had suggested that we include parents and their cellphones as well, their cellphone numbers, rather. Because while a very high percentage of our student population does have cellphone access, an even higher percentage of our parents have cellphone access, such that some of them have even dropped the traditional landlines. So we're fairly confident that we will be able to net the majority of our students, especially the seniors. So, and that's the group, obviously, that we're specifically targeting here. And yes, it does include all of our seniors. So regardless of their plans, be they for a four-year university or for a two-year technical college, the plan is to use Skylert to send out a broad-based message, and also to include the information in the SPAS newsletter, and provide students and families with the opt-in information. So, you know, they will have to opt in. We are not going to go out and, you know, publish or share or by any other means violate any FERPA requirements, which is the, you know, Federal Education Privacy Act. So those are some of the comments that I kind of walked in on. If you have other questions, I'd be happy to.
Kim?
It says that we'll receive a $17,000 grant. What is the cost of the program?
For us, there is no cost. The $17,000 will cover the additional counselor time that will be required to oversee the program during the summer.
Okay, so we're hoping it'll be a wash?
Well, the way that the agreement is outlined, we will have no cost.
Okay.
We only receive benefit in addition to the $17,000 in grant dollars. We will also have access to a resource that we've been no longer able to afford, which is a clearinghouse. So in the future, we will be able to outline for the board and also use for our own edification where our students are going after high school. So what percentage of our senior class next year goes on to a four-year university versus a two-year college versus into the world of work? We'll begin to actually have some hard data on that, and that benefit comes with about a, just under $5,000 price tag. So that's another peripheral benefit for the district.
You have opting in. Can the students and the parents opt out?
Of course.
I mean, because most seniors, and this would have been somewhat good when, because my daughter was first-time college, and just to kind of keep her on track. However, at the same time, I work with 650 college students. At some point, we need to quit babysitting. If they want to do it, they need to do it themselves. Great, but I think in this, if this would ever cost us money, I think at some point we need to put it back into the parent's hand, back into the student's hand, because, again, I deal with 650 of them, and at some point, you need to cut things off and say, "Okay." Because as an employer, I don't want that type of a student that I have to, or employee that I have to remind all the time to get something completed. So my thought.
Jeff?
What's the plan? When are they going to start sending these texts? I mean, are they looking like at January, or are they looking like in December?
They'll start this summer.
So they start this summer for the 2015?
For the fall college...
2016.
So they start, and then they push them all the way to 2016?
Correct.
Okay. You said that we will have access to their data, then?
The clearinghouse data, yes.
Clearinghouse?
Mm-hmm.
And will we be able to drill down to our school district?
Yes, we will know where our students from SPAS, and what universities they are attending, what two-year colleges they are attending.
And then my last question, what are we going to do with this grant money?
It pays for the counselors.
It just pays for the counselors?
It's earmarked to cover the costs of the program.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions for Greg? I have a question. I'm speaking for all the parents who don't like their kids giving their number to everyone and their cousin, and being kind of a study number. Give me some reassurance that their information is protected. This isn't something that's going to come back with a bunch of junk mail, that sort of thing. Please.
Yes. All three of the agreements were vetted with legal counsel. All three of the documents do conform to FERPA requirements, as well as the state regulations regarding right to privacy. Each student is assigned a unique student number. It's not even our student number. So each student is translated into a number. The magic happens with the middleman. They are able to take the information from one entity and send the appropriate text message to the receiver and give the illusion that the text message is coming from Val Fettig or Trina Loomins. It's not actually Val or Trina sending the text message. They are merely the ones identifying this student has this phone number, is intending to go to this college, and so they are, they are the ones who are entering the data into the system over the course of the summer. And the magic really happens with the technology. And the agreements are such that if we believe or we find that there has been any violation, we have immediate severability of the contract with no loss of income for the district.
If the student goes to UWSP first semester and transfers to Madison second semester, does the information transfer, as opposed, they'll stop getting UWSP texts, and they'll start getting UW Madison texts?
Provided we have the information of the change.
Okay.
There's another clause in here besides the guarantee about FERPA. It indicates here under the agreement with the Signal Vine that all materials transferred via secure FTP server hosted by Signal Vine will be retained for the period of the project, March 2015 to September 2015. Upon expiration or termination of this agreement, whichever occurs first, Signal Vine shall destroy all customers' information to the satisfaction of the customer. So it'll be destroyed in less than a year.
All right. Do we have a motion in a second, Sarah?
We do.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shierich?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're on to eHuman Resources. Human Resources was kind of in the same boat as Business Services. We had long interviews all day. Kim, do you have anything you want to report?
Nope, just basically, we canceled our meeting. It will be next month due to the 10-hour meeting that we had at that day.
Okay. We do have recommendations for employment.
I'd move to approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
Second.
I had one question.
Yep.
I just know, maybe Florence, you can address this. I noticed with respect to these, we've got two resignations at the Charles Fernandez Center that are effective like now.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering if we've been able to step up and cover.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Jeff?
Is there a reason why the salaries aren't listed for us on two B and C?
That's, and we could have put that easily, put that in there, Jeff. Those two are simply transfers, voluntary transfers. They're moving over to another school at the same salary that they will receive, even if they're there. These are not new teachers.
Okay, so they're not receiving any increase in their pay?
No, no, it's the same, same pay.
Correct. Sorry about that, Jeff.
Let me ask you a question. Are you able to tell us anymore about what's happening at the Charles Fernandez Center with regards to personnel?
No.
Okay. I mean, I understand that, and that's why I'm asking the question that way, kind of delicately. I just, I've had several contacts with people who have expressed concern about what's happening at Charles Fernandez right now, and I'm thinking this is probably part of it, so. All right.
Jeff?
Another question is, I see that we're losing three special ed's. Is there something that we need to be concerned about as a board, or?
We are concerned because those are hard-to-fill positions. So we are concerned, but they are leaving for their personal reasons. So we are, we're going to do our due diligence to fill those for the next school year.
Kim?
I guess I'm just a little confused about the Charles Fernandez, because really technically, we only have one resignation. The other one on the back is he was filling in for someone, so it's just the one. Though I'm still concerned, I'm more concerned, like Jeff said, over the special education teachers. We have three of them leaving. There's got to be something going on, and hopefully, the board will take this serious and look into it. I mean, because there's something going on where we're having, and I'm not saying these people are doing it. We need to figure out why they're leaving. So I'm going to, between you and me, we're going to have to dig into that, then, because we're going to have to bring that to the board, so.
Will you do exit interviews?
Yes.
And will that information be shared with us at some point?
As a summary, yes. But I've been asking for four and a half years, and I've never seen an exit interview. Not your fault, and my tone is not correct right now, but I have never, never seen an exit interview, never. And we've asked for them every single time, so.
Trish, they're presented to us as a summary.
Right, and I acknowledge, I've received the summary, just the numbers that have the general reasons why people have left. But I guess I concur that this is, I mean, I don't know what the number of total special ed teachers we have, but this is a percentage. This is a percentage of them that shouldn't be ignored.
I think these are personnel issues that the board should be very careful about discussing even now. If the board would like to entertain conversations in closed session about those, we can certainly provide that to the board, but these are resignations in front of the board, which we shouldn't really discuss personnel matters.
Sure.
And again, I don't think we're picking on any one person. We're picking on the whole group. I'm picking on the board why we're not looking into this deeper, not these people leaving our district. We need to, as the board, needs to figure this out, not an individual person. So I'm going to make sure that was clear.
All right. Motion in a second?
Motion to approve is on the table. Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Shierich?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
And Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you, Florence.
All right, Policy and Legislation Committee Chair Report, Meg Ehrler.
We can just move right into the action items.
Let's do that.
You want to follow them, or?
Oh, sure. Regarding the transgender language inclusion, 111, nondiscrimination, anti-harassment, anti-bullying; 411, equal educational opportunities; 511, equal opportunity employment.
The committee recommended approval of the policies as presented. I guess I would ask Superintendent Wininger if you'd like to provide a little background.
So several months ago, when we began looking to include transgender language in our policies, the more we dug, the more we realized that we needed to clean up some policies. So essentially, what we have is a very narrowing of 111, which is a broad policy for nondiscrimination, anti-harassment, anti-bullying, and then taking a vast majority of 111 and putting it into either equal educational opportunities, 411 for staff, I'm sorry, for students, and then 511, equal opportunity employment for staff. And so that's what you have. We have a situation where there was an exhibit, which we're going to bring back at the next Policy and Legislation Committee meeting, and the board meeting, as noted in my memo. And then we looked at also 370 and 371. 370 makes reference to the WIAA policies, which we follow because we're a member, and then 371, we're looking at that, and we'll bring that back for changes at the next PLC and board meetings as well. So it was a complete redo, and we think it's clear, number one. And number two, we also cleaned up and made consistent our nondiscrimination clauses, both for students and for employment. So we'll be, upon board approval, we'll be making sure that everywhere where we list a nondiscrimination clause, we'll be using the ones in the policies. a nondiscrimination clause, we'll be using the ones in the policies.
And we received input from local, some local representatives, as well as some state representatives with respect to recommendations for inclusion of transgender. When we initially started down this road, we were looking at whether we would be having like a separate policy or how it should be handled. And the strong recommendation came back that we include it, don't create a separate policy, just include it with respect to all of the other protected classes that currently exist in our policies. So that's why we're taking a look at several policies together, because the language was included in all of them. There are also, there were also a couple policies that we determined not to look into or not to add to related to participation in co-curriculars, et cetera, because our existing policies reference WIAA policies. And WIAA policies has a whole series of policies related to this specific situation. So our policies just reference WIAA policies with respects to all of our athletes and the requirement that we need to be compliant with those WIAA policies. So that's why two of the policies we did, we aren't recommending any changes to.
Lisa?
So did you consider consolidating these at all? I mean, when I read them, it seems redundant, and it just, I don't know, I would, was wondering if there was a reason you felt you needed to keep them all separate.
Well, we tried to, as Attila said, what we tried to do is now we've got an upfront general policy that's a very basic policy rule. And then we have one policy that refers to students.
Right, I get that.
And it's like a once, I don't want to say it's a one-stop shop, but it is. It's so for any resident of our district, if they feel that they have a concern with respect to a bullying or a harassment, they, for their student, they will have the ability to go to this policy, and it tells them what the rule is, it tells them what the appeal, I mean, how they need to move forward. It will give them the forms they need to fill out as well as the overall policy. And that's the same with respect to the employee one. Again, we tried to, rather than having it frankly be kind of split among a number of policies at different levels, at different areas, we tried to have it under one policy. So that's what we're recommending. I mean, that's, and the substance that was in the previous policies have then been incorporated into these new policies and cleaned up.
Okay, so what I'm asking is the policy 111, 411, and 511, they'll still stand individually, correct?
111 is, yes.
Okay. So my question is, did the committee consider combining them so that there was just one place to go for discrimination, one place to go for harassment, one place to go for bullying?
Well, 511 is employment, so that falls under the 500s. 411 is student, so that falls under the student. And 111 is board policy, which is the policy that we as a board are setting out as our general policy. So the committee felt that it was appropriate that those policies, that they rest within, yes, the appropriate segment in the policy booklet. Do you need a motion to approve 111, 411, and 511? I will make that motion.
And I will second that motion.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I was reading through the policies and everything, and this may be a silly question, I just wasn't 100% clear. What are the current, I guess, rules with the transgender policies, how that works with extracurriculars? I just was, I don't know, I wasn't completely clear on that.
Well, Emma, is your question, do we have a current policy about transgender?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of mentions it, but it wasn't.
We don't currently specifically have a policy that mentions transgender issues. The current policy talks about gender equity and sexual orientation. So what this does is it brings that in and makes it more comprehensive.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Backson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
All right, next we're on to the 100 series, the new policy 166, board member request for information.
And as is noted in the superintendent's report, that is a policy that I brought forward as the board member and chair. It is based on sample districts of the policies relative to board members seeking information and is intended to set out sort of a guideline and understanding for current as well as future board members. So there's a collective understanding of our rights as individual board members to request information from administration.
Lisa?
So Meg, could you tell me the rationale behind why the committee felt the board member needed to rationalize their request?
Again, this is brought forward in the committee, in fact, the committee discussed this, and it was, it wasn't, it wasn't that the board member needs to rationalize the request. It was that if, you know, if information is provided as to kind of why you're interested in it, administrations can sometimes suss out best exactly what you need. So for example, I called this week because I knew that we had the bus bids on, and I asked if I could come in and take a look at those bids. And so, you know, Tom asked me, you know, can you tell me a little bit more about what you're interested in? And I said, well, I just want to have a better understanding of what the bids are, also what the process was, as well as what the specs are. So when I came into his office, that's what he pulled out for me. He had for me the bids, he had the RFP that the district had put out, and then he had all of the various specs that the Transportation Department had provided. So again, he was then able to have that information available for me because he knew what my purpose was. So it isn't a, it isn't a, administration can say no because you didn't ask it for the right reason. It was more of the concept of if you can provide a little background as to kind of what you're looking for, they have a better sense of what information they need to pull in order to help you.
And that isn't how I read this. So I mean, I understand what you're saying, but when the word rational, you know, you must or must state or should state the rationale behind your request, that to me says you have to rationalize it. I mean, so I'm wondering maybe then if what you're saying is the real purpose of this sentence?
That's, and that's what it is.
Right. Then I'm just saying maybe we need to use a different word. I mean, because when you use "should state the rationale," that's rationalizing. I mean, that's, what's that word?
And I'm not, I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Do you have any suggestions about, I mean, it would.
No, because I didn't know what you meant.
Could it say it would be helpful in requesting the information to provide, you know, kind of what you're looking for in order to?
Well, you can put that in there, that, yeah. But like I say, when I read it, that's how, what I understood that you meant.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a, if you don't give us the right answer, that's going to decide. It was if you give us the reason, if you give administration the reason, then they're going to be able to better respond to a board member request.
And I get that. So can we reword that? And again, I didn't know what you meant, so no, I don't have any wording, but maybe, you know.
I think the rationale was if you could be more specific in what you're looking for.
Oh, no, I understood perfectly well what you meant.
Well, that was the discussion that was had, that's what I'm saying. It wasn't, you need to tell us why you want it.
Oh, no, I understood perfectly what you meant.
So maybe there's another word we could use.
Any wordsmithers here?
Not without my thesaurus.
I mean, if we can take it back, you know, bring it back, think of something, I don't know if your committee wants to wordsmith it, if I can wordsmith it later, but right on the spot.
Well, if I can just make a suggestion, you could say something as simple as the request should be as specific as possible.
That's fine. There you go, fine. That solves it.
The request should be specific as possible to better enable the superintendent to fulfill the request.
That's fine, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes, Kim. Number four, I have a little problem with the 10 working days. This week, we got our packet Friday morning. Okay, you guys might have got yours Thursday night. So if I need something to make a, my vote educational statistic, I have to wait 10 days for the information, how am I going to vote on it? So, I mean, are the board, is the board then willing to, if I need some information to, Meg might not need it, but I need it to make an educational vote, are you willing to postpone that? You're giving, you're giving him 10 days, and yes, in number five, he does have the right to decline the request. You put that in there.
Again, this policy is based on existing policies in the state of Wisconsin as to how other boards handle the handling of board member requests, so.
I want us to vote on what we're, what we're doing here, not the whole state of Wisconsin, I guess. So, and then I have a problem with the number six, too, because something I may need to make a, to make my vote count or make a vote, you might not need, or Chris might not need. And what is it the board's call to say I can have it or I can't have it?
Well, and, but see, this is where I'm going to go back, because this is the fund, this is the fundamental point with respect to this policy. We as individual board members, based on our policies, have no right, no ability to direct any member of this district to take any action. We don't. We as a board of the whole have the ability to direct action. Now, stepping back from that, and it was, it was a long conversation that we had at our meeting. The superintendent and administration, at least in my experience with this district, bend over backwards to provide the information that's needed and sought. And we actually spoke specifically about six, because we did have, Chris actually raised a concern about it not being taken care of till the next board meeting. The conversation that we had was, practically speaking, if a board member, say I would make a request, and the superintendent would say, you know what, this is going to take me a lot of time, it's going to take me a lot of effort, I'm going to have to, or my administrative assistant's going to have to take quite some time to compile this information because it's not a report currently around, it's not something that I've already created, okay? So if the superintendent's going to say that to me or to the board, this is going to take too much of our time. We want to make sure that the full board is on board about it. Those are going to be rare. I mean, very rare that that's ever going to occur. If that would occur, and the board had to then vote on that and decided, yes, Kim or Meg, we agree with you, that sounds like good information, we as a board, we should have that, all of our board members should have that, we're not going to make the decision at that meeting. The decision's going to be postponed till the next meeting.
If the majority is thinking that that person doesn't need any more information?
It's not, it's not whether the.
But I mean, that's what it's saying, right?
It's a balancing, as it notes up top, it's a balancing of what the board as a whole believes is the priorities that administration should be focusing on and shouldn't be pulled away from because of an individual request by a board member.
And I understand, and I'm going to interrupt you, and I apologize for that, but if I choose to call up Tom Owens and say, I want to look at the bids, might take him 20 minutes. The board has no say in that if you're doing that, and you have the opportunity where you can do that during the day. So if I want information, but if I want information, I need to say, okay, I'm coming in to look at it. And then really, the board has no say over it, because that's exactly what you did.
Readily available information, Kim. You're correct.
Hey, and Jeff had to stick up slits.
I'm sorry.
I guess the issue that I have is, I don't really understand, you know, if you look at, you read line one and two, it essentially says, yeah, board members can request the information, they need to be as specific as possible, goes to superintendent. But then six makes no sense because it says, requests by individual board members will be considered by the board at the next available board meeting at which the action can be taken. I'm assuming that's supposed to be linked to number five?
Yes, only if the super, only if the superintendent.
And I think it needs to specify that at six, so you can't cherry pick six and say, hey, it says I don't have to provide it.
No, it's only if the superintendent.
We need a five A and five B, Jeff.
That's fine. They just need to be.
Yeah, five A and five B.
They just need to be connected.
And Kim, just one other comment. You know, I think when you were talking about the, getting the board packet, I think it's different in asking a question about something that's coming to you and saying, sorry, you got to wait 10 days to get that answer, than it is to say, you know, I would really like to see what we've done in the past six months, that's putting, putting something like that together. I think there's a difference in asking a question or asking for something that's big. I think that's.
But that doesn't what it says here. It says that if I asked a question, like just like about the busing, you know, their evaluation, if I would have sent that out Friday night, they could have 10 days to, it doesn't say that. It says any information, so I just have a concern with it and.
Although, Kim, I think that that's where, that's where the policy attempts to address that in five, because it notes if the superintendent deems a board member's request is likely to consume an inordinate amount of staff time and/or resources. So it's really referencing a situation where, again, the request isn't, I'm looking, I want to take a look at the bids, or I want to take a look at the floor plan, or I want to take a look at the administrative contracts, or a number of other things. Well, all of the contracts that we currently have today. It's not that, it's where there's a request that's being made that requires the creation of a report, the compilation of a lot of data that isn't easily attainable. And again, my sense is it would be very rare, and if that's the case, the board would have the ability to take a vote on whether administration should be spending that amount of time on that request. And even if the board would say, you know, no, we don't know that that should happen, that individual board member has the ability to file an open records request under state statute, just like everybody else does.
But again, after the vote.
Lisa?
Two questions. One, in the first paragraph, it implies, or I read it to say, that the only information we're allowed to ask about is things in which the board is expected to take action on. And there's a lot of information that comes to us that's just information only that we may have more questions on. So it's not saying we can't ask that. The other thing is, if I read this information or this policy and take it literally, then what it's saying is, and actually, it's been our policy, and maybe that's changed now that we can go directly to directors, but it's been that we have to go through the superintendent. We can't go to Tom, or we can't go to Flo, that that's been, you know, shot down, that isn't how they want the board members to communicate. So that being the case, then are we going back to being able to contact directors? Because this is saying, don't do that. So those are two things. One, the action thing, because there are some things I believe a board member would want information on when they're information only and, you know, you want something more. So I'm not sure we need to keep action in there. Just, you know, if a board needs information, and two, is this literally what you? Just, you know, if a board needs information, and two, is this literally what you want? That every request of information has to be in writing to the superintendent, the board president, vice president, superintendent's assistant?
The, the board action, the board's responsible for the budget. I mean, that's incredibly broad. Ultimately, you will be taking action. So the, the board's responsible for board policy. The board's responsible for all of the employment decisions. So I think, you know, that's all within the board purview.
Okay, so you're saying, when you're saying expect to take action, you're not insinuating that it be a timely action? It's just at some point in time? Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then what about the other question?
Well, I guess I would, I, my sense is that the superintendent determines how they feel best the requests for information are going to happen. And I'll, I'll plead ignorance on this, because I've been on the board since August, and I've actually been directly contacting the department heads, because that's just what I've always done on previous boards, and they've been respond, and they've been responding. So I'm not aware of an existing policy to not contact...
There is a policy. It's been a directive from our superintendent.
No, that's not true. It was not a directive. I don't have the ability to direct the board. It was a procedure that was developed actually by the board when the administration began to be inundated with requests that were taking a lot of time to develop. We have no intention of withholding information from board members, but at some point, it becomes really difficult to do your job, and then to get requests that require an additional amount of time, which we can't fulfill. So I didn't direct anything. That was a procedure that was established my first year in the fall and winter of 2010-11, and the board agreed to that procedure.
My, my question is, is then why does some board members get to go to the directors and some can't? Some take forever to get their emails back or their questions back. I'll, I'll bring some, for instance, that it takes three to four days to get answers back, so, but anyways, just let's move on.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion on the table, Sarah? Okay, so we've changed five and six to five A and five B. We'd make number seven, number six.
There's one other change in number five, at the second last line. It says, the written request and rationale goals, you can strike that to be consistent with the change made in number three.
So I'd move to approve policy 166 with the revisions as presented.
And I'll second.
Right, any other questions?
Yes, Amy, could you repeat what those revisions are?
Yep, I have the number three. The request should be as specific as possible to better enable the superintendent to fulfill the request. Five, the part at the board member may submit the request becomes A, there's a change there, the rational goals get stricken to match the language in three, be as specific as possible. Six becomes B, seven becomes six.
Thank you. No, not that I... All right, then whenever you're ready, Sarah, roll call vote.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shierick?
No.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one.
All right, then we're on to the 400 series.
And I will turn that over to the superintendent.
So we are required by the, let me make sure I get this law right, the Child Nutrition and Reauthorization Act to have a student wellness policy separate from any other wellness policy that we have. So we took a look at 458, and we made some changes to it to comply with the law, and we developed a district student wellness advisory team, which is a new paragraph, and then individual student wellness teams at each school throughout the district. And we think that it's a pretty good idea in order to involve students and staff and parents and, and others in the community to, to help us with our wellness program, not just nutrition, but also physical activity. So it combines the virtues of the PEP grant and the changes we made to our physical education program, along with the changes we've made in our food service program, and kind of gives some structure to it.
And one, I, I would say the main topic of discussion at the committee level was, you know, we're creating a separate team at each school, and they're going to come up with a different plan, and, you know, are you going to wind up, is that, is that the way we wanted, frankly? And the way the superintendent explained, all the schools are going to be provided with guidelines and the must haves, et cetera, et cetera, but all the schools will then have their own flexibility to create their own program that they can have ownership of. For example, the Tiger Trek, you know, or some of the existing wellness activities that schools are currently doing or may invent and create in the future to, to respond to this. So it's, it's, from a district-wide perspective, there's going to be that everyone's going to be following and doing what's required, but each of the schools are going to be able to put their kind of independent stamp on it with input from teachers, parents, students, community. So I would move approval of 458 student wellness policy as presented.
Second. Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shierick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Okay, policy 453.4, anaphylaxis.
A new policy that also brings us in compliance. This was developed by Kathy Graham, our county school nurse coordinator and, and our student services department. So we made sure that, and was also vetted with legal counsel to make sure that we're in compliance. And it essentially provides for a management policy regarding anaphylaxis.
I would move to approve policy 453.4 as printed.
And I will second. And I will just note for discussion that the committee said, if Kathy Graham is telling us this was, this is what we need, then this is what we need. So there weren't any changes made to her recommendation.
And just a clarification, in the second last paragraph, it begins with a district medical advisor, that's not Kathy Graham, that is a doctor that we have, that is a medical advisor that assists the district.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Shierick?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr., sorry. Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Okay, I'm going to call a five-minute break. Are you all ready for one?
Yay!
Yay!
It's about 10 after, please be back at quarter after.
All right, we are on to the board resolution regarding the governor's proposed biennial budget. Everybody has a copy of it. It was agenda item 9F3. We don't do resolutions very often.
What's the difference between the one we got in our packet and the one that was on our table?
None.
Got it. It was not clear that everyone had it or not, so it was...
Okay, thank you.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the attached resolution regarding the governor's proposed Wisconsin 2015-2017 biennial budget.
I'll second that.
And then, Sarah, do we need everybody to stay after and sign one?
Yes, please.
Okay, so if you remember to do that, please, before you go.
The, I'm assuming your committee came up with this, or you were saying you were going to talk about it. Is there a reason we decided on a resolution and not a letter?
Well, we, actually, we're doing both. We've got the resolution, and that's board, that's a board action. And then every member of the legislative committee, Policy and Legislative Committee, has been asked to write a personal letter to important and influential legisla, no, legislators. What administration did, and what administration can also refer to board members, and actually, which I forwarded on to SPARDA today, is both administration and Jen Zoch have provided us with some recommended talking points, as well as some recommended legislators and addresses.
All I wanted to know is why we were doing a resolution.
Oh, no, no, but, but if, if board members would like that information, because, because the legislators are listening, and they, they're listening to individuals, but what we wanted to make sure, what we wanted to make sure was that if our committee members wanted to send out a letter, we weren't all sending out the identical letter. We want each of the committee members, as well as any members of SPARDA or the organization, or any board members, who would be interesting, to take a look at what kind of the, the important points are from an administrative perspective, and then again, one member of our community is waiting as well, who's pretty involved in the voucher choice, things going on in the district, to then put together a letter and send it out to these legislators who the superintendent's believe would be open to listening and possibly making some changes in what's currently being proposed.
I, I, I get the purpose. What I'm asking is why resolution instead of a letter?
Oh, that's what I'm telling you.
Okay, and then...
We're, we're asking for...
I'm, I'm, okay, so what I'm asking is, you're doing individual letters and a resolution as a board. Why the resolution as a board isn't a letter from the board is what I'm asking.
A resolution has more power, Lisa. It's official vote taken in public by the board representing its approval for what is stated here. A letter from the board would come from the board president, and while she could say in the letter it's authorized by, resolution carries more weight.
That's the answer. Thank you.
But you're also welcome, if you want, if you want that other information forwarded on. Do board members want that forwarded on? And you don't have to write a letter, but if you're interested in doing it, you'd have that information to take a look at.
Well, and I would think you'd want to post it on our website, so if there's any parents in our district that would also look at that. I mean, I would think that would be valuable to the whole community, but that's just my opinion.
You can also make phone calls, too.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Shierick?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Okay, and then are you passing that around already? Is that what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So that'll come to you, and then we'll get it back to Sarah. Board organization timeline and schedule. This is something that at, was it your committee meeting?
Yeah, several, a couple months ago.
Policy, and I think we did bring this to the board and indicated that we were going to be proposing this. So now the, it came back before the committee, and so is now here for your review.
It's just things, we, I think partially because leadership transitions, and if anybody is like me, as they move in, moved into a new position, I didn't know exactly what I was supposed to have done at what time. This will help expedite it. It's organized, people know exactly what to do, so it's not a bunch of kind of fumbling around, wondering when we get what done. Don't know if anybody has any questions, any tweaks, anything they want to talk about regarding this.
How about a comment?
Yes.
So my comment would be that in 13 years, having gone through a number of board elections, I have never had anything, seen anything like this as organized as this, and I truly appreciate it, because there's always a lot of fumbling and wondering, this is just great. So I'd like to thank everyone responsible for putting it together.
The, the one comment that I would make is that the, the main purpose of this is that we immediately, as a board, are reaching out to community members, so that we can be sure that we've got applications in, in a timely manner. And again, we discussed as a board having that process, then where the four people who have been selected to head up committees will then meet, take a look at all of those applications, and then create a slate of citizen members, you know, with the intention that at the second regular May meeting, we will be appointing those citizen committee members, so that they will be able to then hit the ground running, and we won't go through a month or two where we might only have board members on our committees. Is there, has there been made a motion yet?
Not yet.
Okay, I will move to approve the schedule for board organization as presented. A second.
Any other questions? Yep, Lisa.
Is this going to be moved into our policy or something, so that this just doesn't get made and lost? I mean, I'm curious what's going to happen to it, it's, you know...
You know, it, I guess I'd look for direction from the board, that the closest thing that I have seen to this since I've been on the board is there, there's a budget one that the board had put together. Can I just ask, will you turn this into a policy, please, policy queen?
Okay. Thank you. Well, we have a, we have the, the policy 185, which is board committee...
Could we reference it?
I think you should make it either, either reference it or mark it as an exhibit. I, I don't know that I would make it a policy.
It just needs to be somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think an exhibit is a great idea.
It's a great idea. All right. Excellent. Thank you.
So an exhibit on to 185, is that what, where we got? Okay.
To the appropriate policy.
Yes, anything else? Roll call.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shierick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, zero.
All right, we're on to general, which is the District Point of Discovery School and Professional Development Center uses of Jackson Elementary School. This has been discussed for a long time. I do want everybody to have a chance to speak to it, as I know everyone probably has something to say. However, we're going to be pretty structured about it. It's 9:30, everybody has to work tomorrow, so let's maybe go around the table, and then if you have a final statement or something like that, we'll hear that, but let's, let's try to be as organized about this as possible.
Faxon, before you begin, just can, I, I don't know if Jen...
Yes.
...wants to add anything to the, what's in the, in the memo?
I don't, but I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Brian, you have anything to add?
Okay, the only thing I want to add is a couple of things, clarify something that my good friend Bob Larson said. It is not $1.1 million. You can see that from the revised cost estimates. That's pretty important to note. Number two, Bob mentioned 34 students. I know that as of last week, there were 50, 52 students, so they've, they've reached that first-year goal. Number three is, is that there are no sentry funds being used in this for the PDC. And the fourth point is, is that any expenditure other than the donations or the contributions by the businesses, that is, the, any expenditures of that 418-594 number would be 50% aided. So I just wanted to make sure that those points were made. Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Question. Of those 52, Jen, how many are out of district or homeschooled?
Seven.
Seven out, out of district, or?
Seven out of district.
Could she come up to the white?
None homeschooled. Yeah, you want to come up here?
Seven are out of district.
Well done.
We have two, we, we have student, we have no one who is homeschooled currently coming to us from a homeschool situation. We have families who have indicated that they will move to a homeschool situation or a different position other than the Stevens Point School District, should they not get into Point of Discovery. So they're, in other words, they're looking for alternatives.
How long are you going to be continuing to take applications?
April 30th. It's the same window as the open enrollment.
Okay.
Yep, we just follow the open enrollment.
Alex?
Page one, the last paragraph. The district administration and the PODS governance, excuse me, governance board have identified and selected the currently vacant Jackson Elementary School as the most ideal facility and site for the school. Most ideal. What other ones have you considered?
In actuality, Alex, there is nothing else to consider, and let me explain that. I think that you received information from the secondary principals, PJ Jacobs, Ben Franklin, and SPAS, stating that there's no room in those buildings. We know there's no room in the elementary schools to house this program. And we also know that Jackson has, as, you know, when I went with you on the tour and outlined all of the different components of Jackson, both inside the building and outside the building, that make it an absolutely ideal place for an expeditionary learning And the fact that the district actually owns it, and it isn't being used, so we wouldn't have to rent it. All those pieces together just led us to conclude that, sure, I guess we could have gone out and looked at, you know, empty storefronts and that sort of thing, but what point would there have been when we know that Jackson is the best place and the district owns it? So...
The point is to cover your bases, because if it gets voted down, what do you have? Postponement.
Well, the district and the governance board has a contract, and the contract says, as it's stated in the memo, will be suited at a suitable location selected by the district and the governance board. Then pointed out, the district owns Jackson School, and for 10 years, we've been paying to maintain that building, especially during the winter months. Why would, why would we, we asked ourselves the question, why would we leave that building vacant and look at the cop store, or look at, for example, Spectra Print has an entire area downstairs that we looked at for the Professional Development Center, and other vacant buildings for, somebody suggested, for example, moving the Fernanda Center over to Jackson and putting the PODS in Fernanda Center. That doesn't make any sense. So we own this building. We don't have to go out and spend more money, and the amount of money to get this building up and running is minimal, considering the fact that we're going to have an expeditionary learning school that we've never had before. So when we did look at other options, or began talking about it, Jackson School, because it's vacant, became that ideal location and that ideal site. So I always liked to have option B and C in my back pocket. This was option A, B, and C from, almost from the get-go, because when we talked about it, it made no sense to leave a school building that you owned vacant and go and rent or lease or buy something else. That would have seemed to us to be irresponsible financially.
So Jackson is a phenomenal building, phenomenal school, and why are we limiting it to only 50, then 100, then 150 students, when we could be using it for a whole bunch of students, bringing back, making the other schools a little bit more balanced, or switching schools like was suggested, and putting the PODS and the Professional Learning Center more centralized in the district?
Well, first of all, we really love the Jackson facility, both inside and out, so moving us to a different location wouldn't provide us the type of opportunities that the students are going to be able to have using the expeditionary learning model at Jackson. But we also talked about starting with more students, and we worked really closely with our expeditionary learning school designers on that. And we talked about starting with 150 or 200 students in our first year. And expeditionary learning schools typically don't grow that way. They are, they are best served when they serve a small population of students. And students do best in expeditionary learning schools when they are smaller. That isn't to say that there aren't expeditionary learning schools out there that are larger, because there are. But those schools have been, the schools that are really successful have been in existence for quite some time and have built their program. We want to do what's best for students, and we'll always make that choice first. And what's best for students is to build the program very slowly and incrementally, so that you do it well. That's what we really want to do.
Anything else, Alex?
No.
Jeff, yeah.
Are we going around just commenting on this, or?
Yep, let's do it that way.
I just, I think that this is a very responsible use of a very expensive piece of real estate for the school district that has been just underutilized, and I think we have an excellent use for it. I think it's a wise decision.
Chris?
Angela, are we just talking about the...
Talking about all of it.
The whole shot?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, are they two separate motions?
Yes.
Okay, then let's do PODS first.
PODS first, okay. So I think for a number of years, we've talked, and we are actually implementing in our schools, differentiation. I think project-based learning is something that has taken off in a lot of areas, and I didn't quite understand the professional development that occurs in this type of school. And so I attended the SLICE day, and I remember throughout the day how engaged the students were, how engaged all of the people who were part of that day. And I remember when I left thinking, and I actually said, I think, to Jen, you have to have a lot of SLICE days, because I believe that if parents see this, they're going to want their students to be a part of this. That isn't to say that in a year, or three years, or five years, this can't be a part of other places in our school district. But I think if you're going to do something like this, and it is, it's so different, the professional development is so different, and talking to Mia, than the ordinary, even the wonderful things we do in our, it's just a different animal. And I think if you're going to start out on something like that, you really need to make sure that you have control as much as you can of what happens in that school, because you're building a root system of something that is just, it's so great that it'll spread. But I really think that knowing Jackson, having walked the whole area, the insides, the outsides, and it's a wonderful place to have this school, and I think we should be proud to have this be part of our district, and I'm absolutely in support of it.
Meg?
I guess I, I just have a question. When we toured the school, we had renovations estimated cost for proposal, and the numbers that we have tonight, and a couple of the line items are significantly lower. One relating to the, well, it's an all-building renovation, it's the electrical power outlets. It's significant, no, is that one it? No, not that one. The carpets and, the AC, yeah, that's what, that's it. The carpeting and the AC, and I'm wondering, I guess, why, and, you know, are we comfortable that the numbers in front of us tonight are the true numbers?
Yeah, what happened the last time was we gave the board everything, including alternates, and you have to remember those alternates, especially the locker room situation, was pretty significant. So we went back, and we knew that that was not going to be the final number. So if you look at B2, I'm sorry, B1, under that cost estimate sheet, B1 about the remove, flooring, replace, install carpeting, and then you drop down to C3, those numbers are almost identical. Don went back and checked with the people who are going to supply that, and those numbers are actually a little bit larger, but we've narrowed where we're going to do it. And then the AC number, they were, the original number was 300,000, taken from estimates that we had gotten from architects who had gone around, gone around the building. What Don did was he checked with the vendor specifically. That is, what would it cost to replace those unit ventilators with HVAC? And so the number came in at 150. So we're very confident about these numbers, because we've gone back several times to either vendors or suppliers and said, what really is it going to, is it going to cost? In the case of the letter C, the Professional Development Center, that number has continued to fluctuate, because we're constantly looking at what it is that we think we need and what we're going to need, and so we've just continued to do our due diligence. And so it's a, in our view, it's a very positive thing that, obviously, the number is half of what was reported, and we're very confident about these. So we went to individual vendors and suppliers and asked them specifically, you know, what they cost.
So is the final number for the 508 number?
Correct.
That's the absolute...
Correct.
Bottom-line number?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Meg?
No, not at this time.
Alex, do you have anything else?
One thing I think that you mentioned during the walkthrough is this would be like a lighthouse beacon of what the charter or the Yale schools could be for the state, like, we want to be the leader. That's still the vision?
We, right, we are, one of the ideas or visions of the school is to make sure that we are a model school, so that people come to us to see what it's like, and really not just for the state, but for the nation. Expeditionary learning was given a $12 million grant by the federal government last year to expand, and so we know it's going to expand. It's, and we know that, because it has a 20-year proven track record of student success, student achievement success. So states and communities around the nation are looking to implement expeditionary learning schools. That's why we got a planning grant from the Department of Public Instruction, not once, but twice, because they really want to see an expeditionary learning school here in Stevens Point. So that gives us a fantastic base to do this well, as I mentioned earlier, and then to bring people in to see what it's like.
What is the integration plan for students going back into SPAS then? Or wherever, ninth grade?
Yep, yep. So students in expeditionary learning schools are taught a variety of skills, and I had talked to you about CREW when we were going around and doing the tour, but they're taught other skills as well, skills that make them have the ability to articulate what it is that they are learning very well, to be able to speak in, publicly speak well, to collaborate with other students. So in other words, they have this skill set that's easily transferable, and that's really the point, is that you want to prepare them for life after school. So you're preparing them not only for that transition to whatever school they're going to next, but to whatever job they're going to next, and to whatever path of life they happen to choose. So the skills are easily transferable, and students in expeditionary learning schools who have to make that transition to a traditional school traditionally do really well.
I was referring also more to the culture side of it, from a class of how big to, you know, when you get up to SPAS, it's quite a leap. It's a shell shock.
Our class size, actually, is no different than an expeditionary learning school, as in our current junior highs. You know, we still have a 25 to 1 ratio, and that's typical at Ben &amp; PJ's. So that part isn't so different. The largeness of the school and the numbers of kids in the building certainly is different, but again, those skills that are being taught are so that you can make those kinds of transitions well. So they'll, we're confident that they're going to do well.
I think you know this one was coming.
I never know.
We talked about this one a little bit. As far as the extracurricular activities, they want to be a part of a basketball team, or, you know, the foreign languages that they may or may not be offered at this level.
Sure.
Is there, are they going to be traveling to and from the other schools?
Yeah, we're hoping to partner with Ben &amp; PJ's and the elementary schools, so that they can continue to participate in some of those sports programs that are currently in place. But Point of Discovery will have their own programs, too, and it'll be based upon student interest and student need. We aren't sure yet what the World Languages Program will look like. We know we'll have something in place, we just don't know what it'll look like. So, yeah, there's questions yet to be answered, for sure. We don't have all the answers yet for all those programmatic parts, but we know that we can offer different things that the students will have an interest in. So it's just a matter of finding out what that is and building that.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
I lumped both of them together. We have a big decision tonight concerning the official reopening of Jackson School. Let me first go on the record in stating, I am for expeditionary model of learning and for the training of our staff. However, here are the new realities within our district in Wisconsin. Keep in mind, Walker's running for president. That's key. It really is. It's a new reality here in Wisconsin. Number one, Governor Walker's budget means a $1.1 million deficit in our eight. 1.1 million, that's a key number. I'd like to share that, you know, I know the sun's going to come up tomorrow, and things are going to be rosy, but the reality is, more than likely, that's going to happen. Number two, we budgeted around $830,000 in Fund 80 receipts. We built that in our capacity. That's gone now. We are no longer allowed to double dip. Add additional costs of labor settlements, cost of Jackson, Life Skill Center vouchers, total estimate, $3 million deficit. It's huge. We haven't seen those numbers in quite a few years, and I know Jen was on the board when we made 7.5. It was devastating. 3 million would be devastating also. At a time when we are sending mixed messages about our finances to our own employees and district, I believe the message needs to be clear. A no vote today reflects fiscal responsibility to our children and district. I do not want this board to have to make the choice of teachers and programs for the sake of taking the easy route. I would encourage that the administration and board to seek a different solution. Professional development, have it at SPAS, Ben, and PJ's. As Bob stated, there's room. PODS, we have in the past practice, had our charter schools within our schools. While I understand expeditionary learning wants the blank slate, a clean slate, a clean slate isn't always the best solution. Look at when they wanted to put, they talked about putting the jail outside of the city limits, or, it's easy to put something in a clean slate. It's harder to take the time to actually make it work. As far as the numbers given by the administration to us of the room usage, use it or lose it. Do you think they're going to leave the room empty? We could schedule, or we could clear at least one room at SPAS, at least one at PJ's, and one at Ben's, to have professional development at. What are the advantages? Centrally located, our staff, a majority of them are located at those three schools. The feeder schools could come in and do their training. It's something that you don't have to hire somebody to clean, you don't have to hire somebody to maintain, the staff is already there. And that's, that's the real issue about this whole plan about opening Jackson is, it's a clean slate. I understand, I get that whole concept, but we need to work within our current infrastructure. Jackson should not be in that equation. We have the space in our facilities. Look at the studies, I mean, we haven't even looked at our studies, our consolidations, where we're going to be kicking up potentially six, opening up two rooms in each of our junior, in our grade schools. It just, $3 million in doing this program, unfortunately, I know who's going to suffer. It's going to be our kids, who unfortunately, well, if they're not in PODS, and POD goes through, they're going to suffer some type of cuts. And my children, yes, I'm going to be selfish about this, are going to feel those effects. And that's what I do not want this board to have to go through, because I guarantee you, after the elections, I'm not running again. I will be on that side of the podium if the cuts come through, and saying, why? Why did you make this decision? Because we need to look at the long-term view of this district. And you know what? Again, totally supportive of training our staff, totally supportive of your program, Jen, but champagne diet on a beer wallet doesn't mix.
Trish?
Well, I'll do kind of like Jeff did, and put my feelings together about the two issues, and I have to say, thinking about the long-term view of the district, I, several months ago, I asked Attila to give us the list of the numbers of students leaving the district, and it's shocking how many kids have left now versus even 10 years ago. And then you got school choice, you know, doing these mass emails to all of our parents, trying to win people away. You know, I'm going to say something that'll probably be quoted in the newspaper, I'll probably regret it, but you know, if you're going to do something, if you're going to go, go big. This is the future of our school district. I feel really strongly that... I feel really strongly that we need to do things, and we need to do them in a big way, like the Life Skill Center. And we need to work towards student achievement and excellence. And this is an opportunity. I have to tell you, I've really struggled with this over the last two weeks. I got several emails from teachers that were very upset. They said, if we have a million dollars, and of course, I think the million dollars was misquoted in the newspaper, but, but they said, if you have a million dollars to spend, spend it on us. And so I spent a long time writing back very elaborate emails about how the million dollars that, I didn't think it was a million dollars, first of all, but second of all, that it's something less than that, but it's in fund balance and it's, it's these money from the Microsoft settlement and so forth. And furthermore, you can't use fund balance to fund teacher salaries for a long time. So, and, and then I got two emails that I want to read because I'm just going to read a little parts of them. But I think that they are so really profound in stating where we, as a district, need to be visioning ourselves into the future. So this is a fellow from Vice President of Sales and Marketing, I hope he's okay with me reading this, Ray Ackland. He says, "As a representative of the business community and parent of children in the district, I believe strongly that this center will have a dramatic impact on improving the skills of our teaching staff and will show the progressive leadership of our district across the state." He, I'm going to skip over a little bit. "As an example, a recent U.S. News &amp; World Report study showed that districts using flipped classrooms saw an average increase of 15% in AP scores. But for this success to become a reality requires strong professional development and staff so that they're knowledgeable and comfortable in concepts, these concepts and methods. Education is becoming a competitive environment." Boy, underline that a couple times. "Parents are evaluating alternatives and relocating based on their perception of the best education for their children. On a recent trip to Texas, I visited a district that was faced with the challenge of retaining and attracting students in a competitive educational environment where they implemented a similar professional development center. Subsequently, they experienced a strong improvement in student achievement and population growth. They also saw an improvement in staff satisfaction." And then I had the opportunity to go to Skyward, I'm sorry, not Skyward, Century last week and, and had an opportunity to go through one of their professional development centers there. And it was like it couldn't have been staged better. We walked in and they had a smart board with a experienced instructor in front and a bunch of guys in suits, women in suits, and, and they all had their laptops and notes all over. It was, it was really astounding. And I thought, boy, I, I want, I hope that's what we look like in a, in a year or two. Anyway, unbeknownst to, just coincidentally, I got an email from someone that's on our Business Services Committee, Joe Frisch, who was the VP of HR at Century for many years. He writes, "I encourage you and the board to support the recommendation to authorize use of funds received from the lawsuit settlement for the construction of the professional development center. As a human resources executive who had responsibility for employee training and development, it was my experience that centralizing the equipment and staff for technology training was both efficient and effective. My experience taught me that centralizing the equipment and its supporting technology like high-capacity broadband lines improves the ability to assure that it is operable at all times. Approving the establishment of the PDC advances the mission of the district. The PDC will prepare teachers to increase and improve the integration of technology into the classroom, better preparing our students for success in the workplace or in the pursuit of post-secondary education." So I had these emails, and then I went back and I looked at this, and if anybody wants copies of this, I've got copies, Brian actually made some copies for me. Because I kept going back to this thing, looking at the colors, of course, me, I was looking at the colors, but the, the red is where we were struggling. Those are classrooms, teachers, students, and professional development in particular. That's where we were struggling, but we're doing great. The green says we're excelling at access. And that's, if you remember from his presentation, he talked about the fact that we have all the equipment, we have fantastic equipment, thank you, Century, but we need the development with our teachers. So I looked at these two pages, but the two pages that really struck me, and I wish I had like an Elmo to put these up on, were engage in professional growth and leadership and promote, promote and model digital citizenship and responsibility, and facilitate and inspire student learning and achieving. Those are this column here, these two columns, and then this first column. And as you can see, they're all either red or gray. And there's nothing in there that's anything but red or gray, except for one little dot at PJ Jacobs. And I look at that and I say, you know what? We, we paid somebody to do this study for us. We, we paid somebody to put this together and analyze our situation. And this is what they came back to us with. And they said, we've got great equipment, we just need to spend more time working with our teachers. This is, this is the future. This is where it's going. And, you know, you sit down with the technology people, we had our, one of our meetings last week, the technology.
Steering committee.
Steering committee, thank you. And, you know, they're talking about throttles and moodles and Googles and, I mean, they're, and the kids are sitting there, and the kids are totally into it, the kids totally get it. This is where it's going. So I will repeat my quote that probably will end up in the newspaper. I want to go big. I think this is important for our students. I think that we need to do this for, to excel and for excellent student achievement. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this.
Lisa?
When I've heard people from the community come speak, staff speak, board members speak, I have not heard anyone not in support of professional development or the pods concept. That, and, and I think people are thinking that if we don't put it at Jackson, then that means we don't support that. If we don't go big, we don't support it. They're completely different issues. The, the initial cost to open Jackson is a one-time cost, but then you have the operating costs, you have all of that. And before my time, there was a very unpopular decision to close Jackson. And it was based on the fact that they needed to close the facility to balance their budget, the operating costs, they couldn't afford it. So, I mean, there were, there were real reasons to close it. So unless those reasons weren't legitimate or something, I, I'm, I'm missing the connect. I, like I said, I feel like people are trying to say, you can't have professional development without having Jackson. You can't have the charter school without opening Jackson. And, and I totally disagree with that. While some people believe, you know, we won't take that 1.1 million dollar cut, there's a lot of things that have happened in the last five, 10 years that I didn't think I would ever see. You know, the value of homes dropping as much as they did, you know, just, our whole society has changed. So to say that that cut's not going to happen, I'm personally not willing to take the risk of having to cut more programs to the students that are not involved in this, if it comes to fruition and we end up with a $3 million cut. Again, I don't see, I don't see the connection. You do not have to have it at Jackson. This is, this is a Life Skill Center all over again, where it had to be at this one facility, and then it got moved possibly here, to here, to here, to here. You know, I don't think we're doing our due diligence by not looking at other options. So I will not be supporting the Jackson reopening. Again, that does not mean I don't support the programs. And again, I have yet to hear anybody say that they don't support themselves.
Being last isn't as, any easier as being first, but I want to say probably the best decision that came out of the, the whole pods thing, and, and again, I'm for the charter school as long as it's done properly, but I'm not, I've been accused of not trying to save this district and this board money, you know, with the Clean Power thing, 1.1 million dollars. I've been quoted that I won't support saving money. Now we're ready to, I'm going to say, throw it away. We can do this much, much better. Moving into Jackson is one of the best decisions. However, I'm glad to see that the administration took another look at that building, because a year ago, and I can show you the quote that they did, it was a rundown, rat-infested building, less than a year ago. Wow, how things change, and the rats must have just kind of walked away and left. So I'm glad they took another look at that, and I think we need to take another look. And again, I'm not blaming you, Jen, because that's coming from, you know, giving you the ideas that, that, that was there. Also, I can't support it with all the cuts that are coming down the pike. I had to sit on this board after being only three months on here, and we had to cut programs, cut music programs for our majority of our students, make our students pay for their sports, good, bad, ugly, I don't know how that's turning out. It's gifted and talented all over again. You know, gifted and talented lasted 20 years in our district. They had the transition problems, they had a difficult, I knew friends in there, I knew kids in there, and when you go from that kind of a society into the regular one, some kids do it really well. But there's transitions, difficulties that do that. Same thing with homeschooling here. I just can't, and I want to keep them separate, because they're two different, separate items. I would be more apt to vote for the pods going in the Jackson by itself, but, and I will come and speak on the, the tech, because I'm for the tech, but let's get it into our schools where we belong. I think we should have waited for all of this until that Consolidated Task Force got completed. I think we are jumping the gun again. And unfortunately, it's going to be other board members and students. And I don't have nothing to lose, I have no child in here. My children came through Spash when it was the talk of the town, the talk of the state. Boy, was I lucky, and so were my student, my, my, my stu, uh, kids. So I, I will not support this because I am too afraid that's what's going to happen with all the cuts, so. Yep, anyone want to say, ask Jen, anything else?
Oh, I wasn't going to ask Jen, but I wanted, just wanted to make another comment, and it was about the Professional Development Center. I know they're listening to, and, and on my committee, we talked a lot about technology and there were a lot of presentations. I know there is a concern, and it was also at the listening session we had, about not having professional development or help in the classrooms. And Brian spoke to this, and, and the, all of the teachers who are in there doing it spoke to this also. That is not going away. There, there's a different concept here of professional development for our staff to go back to their classroom, using what they've learned with support from our staff. Years and years ago, really quick, I was a systems analyst, data processing manager, and programmer. We did a conversion from IBM to Unisys, and they sent people from all over, for six months, I went to classes to learn everything about these machines so that, and, and all the different things that we have in this district, we learned that. When we went back to our company to do the conversion, all along the way, working with the people who were there and taught us how to use this every day, that's what, that's what this is about. Giving that professional development, you cannot do that with all the different devices and all the different things. If you heard the people talk about what they're doing, I think this, this is a star. This is a real star in our community, and I'm going to support both.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that people are aware too, what was said up here is that we always ask our staff what they want, get their input, but we never take it. They don't want it, they want it in their building, they want the whole concept in their building or buildings. They don't want to drive over, like when my kids are on the other side of the river, you know, they don't want to do that, they want it in there. Let's listen to our staff. Let's, let's listen to our task force. Our task force for technology never said a new building. Never said that. So let's start listening to our staff, who we keep asking, but we never listen to them. Does anyone have anything else they want to ask Jen, or can I let her sit down?
Oh, you can let her stand.
Have a seat.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. Meg?
I'm, uh, I guess I wanted to say ditto to what Trish said. And I also, I'm not trying to be flippant, but I want, it just struck me, we all watched the Packers lose this year, okay? And I'm not, I'm not a football professional by any means, but what I watched happen in that game is, at some point in time, they went from, we're going to win, and we're going to win big, to we're going to protect, we're going to protect our position so that we don't lose. And there, the face of education is changing as we sit here. And the competition and the options, and frankly, the families looking for options is, it's, it's growing exponentially, whether it's homeschooling, online schooling, charter schools, voucher schools. It's there. And we, as a district, I think, really need to be creative, and we need to think out of the box, and we need to make those decisions that are going to follow our mission of making every student successful, as well as providing the professional development opportunities for our staff. I think when you, when, when you talk about professional development, you know, we've got several different scenarios in terms of our buildings. We've got one high school. It may make sense to have a lot of staff training for our high school at the high school. And we have two middle schools. So yeah, are there, are there more options to be able to pull all those staff together at one or the other of locations? But we have elementary schools across our community. And to me, I, I just think of having the ability to not only have all of our K through 2 teachers, or maybe just our K teachers, and all our K through 2 EAs, or maybe just our KEAs, able to come to one location and learn the skills and the options and the what's out there that many of us saw this year down in Milwaukee, in terms of the apps, in terms of the programs, in terms of the teaching methods, and to be able to, to, to bounce those ideas off of each other, to learn about them, and then to go back to their classrooms and have that tech staff work with them in their classrooms on an individual basis to support them individually in what they need. So I'm going to support this. I think we, as a district, we need to move forward. I, I want to tell the administration, thank you for all the efforts that it took to go out there and raise some dollars to create this center, to the tune of, I believe, the budget says 175,000 of donations that's going into creating that Professional Development Center. And I want to note that the remainder of all the expenses that are sitting in front of us is a Microsoft settlement. With, actually, right now, there, there's more money, with those two pots of money put together to cover all the costs of what it is we're looking at tonight. So I think we need, we need to do this, we need to move forward, we need to provide different options. And I think the one symbol of the success of that is we now have a Point of Discovery School that has more kids who have already applied to be in it, and there's still a month and a half for students to apply. So that's telling me that there are people out in our community, and actually, outside of our community, who are looking for new and, and new options for their kids.
Okay, yes. Just very quick, and, and I do agree with you, Meg, that we do have to be very creative with our taxpayers' money and not spending it foolishly, in, in my eyes, and not thinking twice about what we're doing. And, and I forgot what else my other thought was. I knew I should have wrote it down. Oh, the Microsoft money could be used on way more than 42, 52 students, way more. That's my thing. We don't have to use it on this. We don't have to use the, the Medicaid money on the Life Skill Center. There was nothing that said we had to use it on that. We could use it on more students. And she's going to call the question because they're done talking. Alex, go ahead.
Don't ignore what the staff is asking for. The educators want it in their building. I don't know why anyone's not hearing this, who's going to vote against it, or I mean for it. for it, for it in the building. They want it in their home school buildings, SPAS, Ben, PJ's, why not? The other side of this, my eldest, we put him in for the Pods school. Of course, I want the best for him, but I'm not going to give him the best and take it away from all the other kids. So, I'm going to vote no. Think about that.
Okay. Has everybody said what they need to say because we need to move? It is about quarter after. Let's do both of these votes. I think everyone said what they're going to say. I'm going to take my two seconds at the end and just say, when I ran in 2012, I remember one of the people asked us, how important is technology in your district? And I answered, he said, one out of five, and I said, three, and I said, and it makes me mad that I have to say a three because I don't want it to be that important. I would say that after three years on the board, I'm wrong. It is not a three. It is a five. It is, it is where we're going. And I don't have to like that. I don't have to like that my kids' faces are plugged into screens and they know more about all this than I do, but I better get on board or I'm not going to have kids who know what's coming. So, that's just one thing. It's something that I've, I've kind of come full circle on where I've had to learn. I have a great respect for what our staff thinks. And I think maybe it's been brought up a couple times that the staff said they want it in their schools and stuff. I actually talked to several people during conferences. They said it's time. It's time for a Professional Development Center. I mean, I flat out asked them, you know, what do you think? Is this, do you want it here? And they're just like, there's no room, it's not working, we need a place. And the people, the TISs have said they need a place and they respect them and they respect their opinion. So, just want you to know that I've heard the other side as well. We need a motion, one at a time, please.
I would move to approve the Jackson Elementary School as the location for the Point of Discovery School Pods in accordance with paragraph 16 of the district Pods contract and as presented.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Backson?
Yes.
Ms. Kokonowski?
No.
Ms. Pressley?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
No.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Five, four, motion carries.
And I'd move to approve the expenditure of $418,594 from the fund balance for the CyPress program, the Microsoft settlement, for renovations, furnishings and equipment of the Point of Discovery School and the Professional Development Center located at Jackson Elementary School.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Um, I, because I didn't speak on this, I kept it separate.
Oh, okay.
I basically, the, I mean, I'm, I'm going to go against this one just like I did the other one, but word on the street is that if this does not get approved, that our superintendent will make sure that the, the, the professional development will open up at Jackson School. Three people told me that this weekend. So, that's unacceptable, but go for the vote.
Does anyone else that didn't get a chance to address that want to speak to it? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Shurek?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Pressley?
No.
Ms. Kokonowski?
No.
Ms. Backson?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries, five, four. All right. Board listening sessions are what's next. We've gone through, we had one guest ask us to, it was Sam, who's running for the board, asked us to just keep trying, that he, he thought that it would, people would start catching on, they'd start showing up. We're going to try the process again on March 16th to get feedback on the superintendent Just want to know where, for those of us, were there five of us there? Do we have a quorum? Or are we just missing a quorum?
No, I think we had one.
Okay. What, what do we want to do?
I would just like to make a comment. I think the intent was to have our community come speak to us. I think right now with the superintendent search, we're going to have that. We basically had staff come to speak to us and maybe one or two other people. I think with what we're doing with the task force, with the superintendent's search, gathering all of this information, I don't want this to go away, but I'd like to postpone it at least until we have a new board, we have more of a focus on what we're going to do because I think we're going to have a lot of input from the community as far as the task force recommendations. And so, I'd like to rethink it, like maybe in a month or two, because we have a lot that we're going to be dealing with right now. And so far, we've had staff come. So, it isn't the, it isn't the, what I, what I was hoping it would be more of, and I think we're going to have what I was hoping it would be more of, but not because of, of the listening session. So, I'd like to at least put it off with all of the meetings and things we have coming up in the next couple of months. I'd like to postpone it.
All right. So, we've got March 16th set to do it. April is the month of elections. The board will, a different board will be seated April 27th, I think, to the 27th or 28th. So, that would just be April that we're missing until the board decides what to do. What does everybody else want to do? Kim, you were there. Alex, you were there. What do you guys think?
I think with all the stuff that's on our plate, it's a, it's a good thing and if we stop it, my biggest fear is we're not going to start it again. It was hard enough for Alex to get it going. It took him six or eight months to get it going. I think with all the stuff on our plate, this would be a good time to let the community and the community is going to come out more and more. And if not, it, it would be a nice way to get the staff's input, though we don't seem to use it, you know, their, their input on what's going on. And they can't go to the, the CTF because you have to be invited or allowed to come. So, this way they can kind of, you know, try to find out what's up with it. I think it should continue.
Okay. So, that's a yes. What do you think?
Creating another option, we should do it.
Creating another option? Is that?
Option for people to come and speak, we should do it.
Oh, because it is creating another option. Gotcha. Okay. Anyone else have thoughts? I mean, the thing is, is it's not required, so we can keep them steady and whoever can show up can show up and we'll keep them going and see what they turn into. My one concern is, is being heard enough? Are people, are people getting frustrated that we're hearing something but we're not responding? I think that was my frustration with the last meeting is that it wasn't a conversation and I know it can't be, but it kind of felt like we were being, how do we even get to say to people, you know, this is what I think about what you said, this is what I'd like to do, this is what I want to set up? Do we need to set up the listening session and then a resolution session? I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, but it, it felt, I can see where a frustration would start building, that people would start thinking that we're not listening, which not doing what someone wants isn't not listening, but what do you, what do you do to, to keep the conversation going? And do we, maybe that's what we could revisit, Chris, when we get back into it or keep it going, is what are we doing with this then? What are we doing with the information we're gathering?
And that would be my question. I mean, there's notes taken. How come we don't have, you know, the, the ideas that people are bringing forward? So, then if a board member wants to put it on the agenda, we, we could. I mean, I have my notes that I have, but after a listening session on this piece of paper, it should say, you know, this was said, this was said, this was said. So, then hopefully we can have a discussion, when are we going to talk about it? You know, when are we going to bring it forward? Because if we're just not going to respond, they are going to get frustrated. They are frustrated. I mean, not only at the listening sessions, but at emails that we've been receiving. No one does anything about it. And so, they're frustrated.
Well, it's still new. I mean, we are figuring it out. Yes.
I just think it's, it's important as we move forward that we ensure that the listening sessions are board listening sessions and that they are matters that we as a board are responsible for. So, for example, the one that we have coming up is superintendent search. And to me, that's, that's a perfect thing. That's our decision for us to have that information brought forward. We're, hopefully, as we move forward on the joint consolidated task force report, there are going to be a number of issues related to that that the board is going to be making a decision on. I have to be honest and say, at a certain level, human resources issues are not board issues. I mean, we as a board are responsible for hiring the superintendent. That's, that's our job. And the superintendent is responsible for hiring the staff and the hierarchy on down. And I struggle a bit with the concepts that we're looking, that, that, that the listening sessions could be a way to avoid chain of command in terms of employment issues. And I don't know in the long term that, that that's a good thing for the district or the board. So, I think it's important if we move forward on it, that we have some understanding and some definition about what our role is and what our responsibilities are and what our, what is the role and responsibilities of administration. And that's especially critical as we look to hire a new superintendent.
For anybody who's still watching live, if you would let your board members know as you see them, if the listening session for the superintendent is something you're planning on attending, what I need to know is what sort of venue we need. Is it something we can hold here or the Pioneer's Room? Is it something we need an auditorium for? I genuinely don't know. Don't have any idea what size audience to expect. So, if you're thinking you're coming and it's not something you typically go to, would you let someone know, shoot them an email or stop them at Target? And just let us know what you're thinking so we have an appropriate venue for people. That is it. Meeting dates, the most important thing people need to know, March 11th, six to eight. Ben Franklin Auditorium will be the question and answer time with the two superintendent candidates. March 16th, listening session to give us feedback on what you thought of that. Plus, please be emailing us, calling us if you have questions or concerns.
And when will the Survey Monkey be up on our site and available for these people to give their input?
That day, I would say, March 11th.
Okay. Just.
The 16th, what time, Angel?
Uh, depends on the venue. So, I'm going to say seven to eight is what the plan is right now.
Okay.
And then.
Can I stop you for a second? March 11th is Wednesday?
Yeah.
And the survey's prepared already?
It's, yeah, I mean.
Okay. We can do this?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
Okay. And then March 30th is the next board meeting. We moved it to the fifth Monday because of spring break. So, it is March 30th, not the, what would be the 23rd. So, we won't be here the 23rd. Have a wonderful, safe spring break. I am going to read what I need to read for us to move into closed session. 19.85 parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, specifically to administrators and the superintendent's search. I need a motion to move into closed session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Backson?
Yes.
Ms. Kokonowski?
No.
Ms. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
I prefer to do this in open session, but no, it can be done in closed. No.
Ms. Totten?
I know, well, I know this can be done in closed. I prefer to do it in open. No.
Motion carries. We're in closed session.